Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, January 28th Town Council Committee of the Whole meeting. All councilors are present with the exception of Counselor Parker who is attending the TBCCA meeting on behalf of the Town Council. Calendar and Communications, Counselor Baumgartner.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Franco.
I attended the tour of the Mystic Educational Property tonight with Rasppler and Paige Brock. That's it.
Counselor Heath.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Oberg.
I attended for the Council a very cooperative meeting on the part of the Water Taxis. And John, I'm sure we'll be filling you in in the future on that, but it was a very cooperative meeting and I'm quite sure we're going to work out a way to make the numbers work.
Very good. Counselor Bordelone.
Yes, I attended the Board of Education had a meeting to discuss the upcoming, they had a budget hearing down at the senior center last week, so I attended that.
Counselor Melendez.
Nothing to report.
And Counselors O'Carroll.
No report.
Thank you. I also toured the Mystic Education Center with potential developer and it's quite exciting, the potential at the Pratt Building. Approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes, they begin on page two. Counselor Baumgartner.
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of January 15th, I'm sorry, 14th, 2020, so moved.
Seconded. Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Zepary. And I would note that on page eight of our packet, the time for when we came out of the 2019 786 Bell four B tax issue executive session is missing, so we were out at nine o'clock for the record. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Franco.
I believe on page 14 of our packet.
That's in the second set of minutes.
Oh, we're not doing the second right now.
I think Counselor Baumgartner, you moved just the first set, correct?
Yes, are we approving separately?
That's, that's fine. So if you could just hold that thought until, is there any more discussion on the January 14th minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of 2020 48 January 14th minutes, please say aye. Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously with eight councilors. Counselor Franco, would you move the next set, please?
Make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole special meeting minutes of January 21st, 2020, I assume moved.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Zepary. Counselor Franco, you had a correction?
No, I'm, it's correct, I'm sorry.
You're good. Any other discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2020 49 January 21st, 2020 special meeting minutes, please say aye. Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously, thank you. All right, we have quite a bit on the agenda tonight, we're going to start with 2020 47 Assistant Director of Library Services on page 15. Counselor Heath, please.
Motion to recommend a resolution approving the merger of the Manager of Circulation and Technical Services and the Manager of Public Services positions and to approve the new job description and title of Assistant Director of Library Services, I assume moved.
Second.
Moved by Heath and seconded by Baumgartner. And I believe we have Library Director with us this evening. Hello, and Human Resources Director. If you would just introduce yourselves for the people watching, that would be most helpful. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm the Library Director, Jennifer Mealy.
Good evening, Bob Zagany, Director of Human Resources and Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us about the position?
Well, recently the library experienced a retirement position of the Manager of Circulation and Technical Services. To that end, we determined that we can realize efficiencies merging the Manager of Circulation and Technical Services with the Manager of Public Services. Having achieved this, we will change the title of Assistant Director of Library Services, reporting directly to the Director of Library Services. And as Jen has been the architect through this process, I'll turn it over to her.
So, over the course of some years of 2016, we have been actively looking at the structure of the organization as a whole. And a lot of processes that we've been looking at include looking overall at how we're working. And due to the retirement recently, as Bob mentioned, we are looking actively at merging some management administrative positions for a number of reasons. One, we want a more linear structured way of workflow. So, we're thinking the Assistant Director would be really vitally important, it would be merging two different departments into one, and so that person would have additional responsibilities. It is not an add, it is a merge, and it is within our budget, it would not be in addition to.
Thank you. Do any of the councilors have questions? Counselor Bordelone.
I just wanted to thank you for looking at, you know, the department as a whole and making, I know last budget cycle you had come through with some stuff and, you know, looking at ways to efficiently run and kind of, again, looking at that again, you're doing that, and that's encouraging and especially when we're, you know, looking at budget season coming up, kind of ways to run the town efficiently, so I do appreciate it, thank you.
Any other councilors have questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2020 47 Assistant Director of Library Services, I'm sorry.
That's not the only part of this, there's also hiring four new part-time people.
Sure.
Yep, so what we're doing, when we're looking at it as a whole, this would be the first process, what we're looking with some of the savings that would be with the merger, we're looking at a plan to look at our operating costs and support services. So with that, we're looking to hire four support staff, non-union and non-benefited support staff to help us in the ways of, in our teen room, which we have a lot of people in that room now, and our teen librarian could really use the help, so we're looking for a support staff member there. We're also looking for a support staff member in our children's room as well. We're also looking at more tech help because we have a lot of people coming in with technical needs that would be great to have some extra support. And I will be coming to you at another time to look at maybe an additional assistant municipal video tech over time because we're seeing that the needs of the community as a whole, we're doing a lot more with the video GMTV department, so just as a support service.
Now, you're going to hire four new people, are those four new salaries also already in the budget?
They will be included in the budget.
They will be.
Not in, yes, not in addition to. We will absorb that into the current budget.
And in future budgets, will that be reflected by an increase?
It will not.
I, you know, at this point, I don't understand the need for four new hires, and I'm concerned about that, and if it would result in a reduction in your budget, that would be beneficial to the taxpayers. So that's why I have some reservations there. I personally would like to see more explanation of why these people are needed. So, that's about it. I would move that, may I make a amendment to the motion?
No, I think you can just vote against it.
You don't have any amendments?
This, if we read what it says, this is just saying you're approving the merger of the Manager of Circulation and Technical Services and approving the new job description of the new position. This doesn't, the resolution does not include any of the part-time help.
All right.
Okay. I think, I think your sentiment is noted by the Director and Human Resources Director, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
I was wondering where it was. This is four new people.
It's in the background.
Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Oberg.
Clarification, then, what we're doing is we're approving this, but we're not necessarily approving the new positions?
We are, the motion that was made is just the resolution to create the new position from the other two positions.
Right, so we're not doing four new people at this point.
We're not adding anything right now, no.
Correct, that's exactly what I wanted to make clear. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to move it. All right, so, all those in favor of 2020 47 Assistant Director of Library Services, please say aye. Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously with eight councilors. Thank you very much. All right, we are on to 2020 43 Board of Education update, and there are several things that will be presented tonight, and we have Dr. Grineer has come out this evening as well as Assistant Superintendent Austin, and I believe there are three, two, two portions to this?
I think there's three.
Three, okay. I have three page numbers written down here too, so, all right, the test scores, air quality and alliance.
Can I hand out so you can read the numbers?
Is this in addition to what we were provided already?
It's what you have, just so you can follow along a little bit.
Okay, they reproduced everything for us. Good evening. Hello.
Good evening. So this is really a presentation that we've already given to the Board of Education, and it really goes back to the SBAQ, which is the Connecticut Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium for grades three through eight, the tests that the students took last spring. We really received the data pretty early, it's getting better and better from the State Department, so we received the data over the summer, they kind of make it official at the beginning of the school year and we're able to send it out to parents and inform the Board of Education. Our students are now getting ready for SBAQ 2020, so after vacation they'll come back and the teachers are getting them ready, and after vacation, April vacation, they'll come back to take the assessment across the district. So, we're going to show you both our scores in relationship to the Derg, they used to call it the ERG, Economic Reference Group, now they call it District Reference Group, and also our local neighbors and community.
Could you just explain really briefly what the Derg means to people that are watching?
District Reference Group, so it's other groups like ourselves, size of the community, economic, and so they like to compare like districts, so we're like districts to these others. One of the things I'd like to point out is when I go through the slide presentation, ELA, think blue for book, and math, think green for money, so there'll be blue and green so that you can adjust. Groton is in the red for our Fitch colors, and we have the state average and the Derg average also listed here. The asterisk is the Alliance districts, and it's interesting because Mike and I have noted since we became an Alliance district a few years ago, that many of our Derg partners are also Alliance districts. All but one or two in this list are also Alliance districts. And we, our average for three or better, which is meeting the goal and above the goal, was 59.7 for last year's group of students. The average for the state, we were above the state, which was 55.7, the Derg average was 49.6, and we really received the highest score in the Derg. For mathematics, we were at a 49, the state average was 48.1, the Derg average was 40.4, and there were, I think we were kind of second to Winchester, which is a small community, I think, up north, so. Of course, we're not really just satisfied, we certainly want our kids to make continued growth, and the state does use a growth model, so we're able to look at kids and the growth that they make year to year, which that's really what's interesting when you drill down and look at student by student, and our school data teams do that, and our district data team does that, so we're really monitoring progress along the way. Then we like to look at, with the ELA for the Alliance districts, local districts, you can see Groton was a 59, and you see that our local areas, there are some that are much higher, you know, North Stonington, Stonington, but they are in different Derg groups, different district reference groups. And there are just two others, New London and Norwich, that are also Alliance districts. Same thing in mathematics, when we look at locals and, you know, our neighbors, we really see that North Stonington again, and Stonington, Waterford are much higher, so, but I have to tell you, in working with my colleagues at LEARN, a lot of us are taking on some of the same initiatives and we collaborate and work together, so that's really a wonderful And then we look at SAT, which is given in the 11th grade to all students, it's paid for by the state of Connecticut. In preparation, we do PSAT testing beginning in the fall and in the spring for ninth and tenth and even 11th graders in the spring. So we're also monitoring PSAT progress, and we're seeing growth PSAT through SAT, so that's also important for us to monitor. So looking at our district reference group in English Language Arts, we see that the average score for English Language Arts in Groton was a 516, the state average was a 514, this Derg average was 489, so we, again, were ahead of all of our district reference group. And in mathematics, we received a 502 average, the state average was 500, and the Derg average 464, again, ahead of the state and the Derg in mathematics. Comparing to our neighbors, local districts, you can see that, again, we're ahead of the state and we're a little below the local average, so we're kind of even neck and neck with ledgers, so, but we still, again, with SAT, just like with SBAQ, we want to see our kids grow, we want to see that continuous improvement. And in mathematics, where we were, the average is a 502, above, slightly above the state and just above the local average, but you can see that, again, North Stonington tends to be outperforming everyone in this, in this local area. So, that, you know, if you have any questions about the data, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, so right now, we're just going to take questions on the test scores, if anyone has questions on that. Counselor Bordelone.
Thank you, thank you for presenting this, I did attend your Board of Ed meeting where you gave these scores, actually, there was actually more slides at that presentation that broke it down with some other key factors.
I think we were showing also the growth model, so we had other indicators.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have those presented as well, because I think that also narrows it down a little bit further. I think data is important, I think it's important to present data, but I also think it's important to say, what are we going to do with this data and how are we going to use it? Constantly in Groton, I often bring up, you know, closing the achievement gaps here. When you look at the Derg and you say, you know, as you look at the start, looking at math and English, and almost all of them are in an Alliance district, our scores aren't overwhelmingly top-notch to me, there's a concern there. When you compare them outside of the Derg, which then you eliminate some of those schools that have an Alliance district label or, or indication, it, once again, we're, we have some work to do. And when you broke it down further at the Board of Ed meeting that I attended, and it broke it down even further, I was seeing things like children of color kind of being, falling very low on that identifier, children of, it broke it down with special needs, English as a second language. It also broke it down, kids who identify or have a 504 IAB, and I feel like they're, we're missing something. So I guess my hope is, we have this, but what are we going to do to close those gaps to make sure that all children are learning? I know that our state averages, that's a big encumbrance, but when you look at top performing schools like East Lime and Stonington, and you look at their scores and you're looking at ours, you know, I think we have some room for improvement. I know we were allotted the 600, was it that, I forget how much you guys got from the Alliance district this year, I'm just hoping that that money is going to be used effectively to help bring up these scores and make sure that we are targeting these children where they need to be, and I think we have some work we can do here.
And that's a great follow segue, because I will follow up with some of that.
But I did see outliers of children that were falling on that others presentation that I think we need to identify and make sure we start targeting.
Right.
So that would be, I'd love for you guys to come back and say, now, what are you going to do with this?
Right.
Thank you.
Counselor Melendez.
I just want to congratulate the district for beating the state average on all four tests, I think that's very important. And really, in our district reference group, it seems like we're not even in that class. We seem to be the top on all of those, so I just want to congratulate you guys on that, and of course, you know, I'm happy to hear that you guys are still, you're not satisfied, you want to go higher and higher, but I just want to congratulate you on that.
We want the best for those students.
Absolutely.
All right, Counselor Oberg.
I know math is your passion, so I was just wondering, under the local school districts, where the math was, you know, down a bit, what's your personal goal with that?
I'd like to see all kids take algebra by eighth grade, I have big goals. And we're actually hosting Connecticut Council of Leaders of Mathematics on Thursday at Fitch along with Atomic, which is my group of Connecticut teachers, and so we have a large group coming, and I think it's really about continuous professional development and getting the right resources for kids, engaging them in the mathematics, and doing it systematically, K-12, and that's something that we are really marching forward with. So we aren't going to be satisfied with that, to tell you the truth.
I know you're not satisfied with that at all.
Yeah.
You just said a word I was going to ask you about, now I can't remember what the word was. What do you feel is needed? I think you said something about, in your meeting, you were going to be looking for what you need to make this happen.
Well, I think that, you know, what is needed is that we really need to address any gaps, as Portia had mentioned, that we really have to make sure that we're meeting the needs of every student and knowing where they are mathematically, and being able to give them what they need to move forward.
Okay.
And giving them rigorous, relevant mathematics that's interesting to them.
Yeah.
And having them really grapple with it, not just, you know, kind of spoon-feed it. We really want them doing a lot of the hard work and we want the instruction to be top-notch and high-quality, and that's what Mike and I see often when we do walkthroughs through these schools.
If, if a student is falling behind a little bit and you're keeping track of that, do you then offer tutelage?
We certainly do. We have an SRBI program, which is scientifically research-based intervention. We also do before and after-school, and I'm pleased to show you some, how we're spending our monies on this alliance where we're going to do even more than what we've been doing.
Very good. All right, great, thank you, that's, I'm sorry, go ahead, I thought you were done.
Never. Is this, is this still common core?
Yes, they call it Connecticut Core. So, it's, and there's model curriculum at the state level, so we really are working with other colleagues around the state, and so in the state of Connecticut, the test is the same, so if a child moves from place to place, we're still able to keep track and monitor their growth, and in the state, this is what is expected as the standards for every district, no matter where you are.
Now, is that out of the state also, like, you know, the military kids that are getting moved around?
I wish it was done with a little more fidelity, I think states have kind of taken it on their own to do, so there are other states like this, but as a Navy junior myself, I would have appreciated that.
Yeah.
Eight schools in 12 years, in about six states, so.
Yeah, my kids went through the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselors who haven't spoken yet wish to speak. Counselor Bordelone.
One more question, when I looked at the outliers from the charts, when I compared the ones when I went to your Board of Ed meeting, English as a second language, how many English as a second language instructors do we have in our district for the middle school, high school level currently?
Awesome question, you are giving me all the segues to my next part. We only have two certified teachers, one for the elementary and one for the middle school and the high school. Our numbers are continuously growing, we do have tutors though in every school who then report to the certified teacher.
Yeah, because I've had some people in the community express concern, and I've expressed concern regarding that. I feel to truly be able to give the students more exposure to the written language, having one English as a second language teacher splitting part-time between a whole middle school, well, two middle schools, and a high school which is over, I'm guessing roughly close to 3,000 students in the whole building, but, I mean, she may, or he may be only working with a group of five or 10, that's a bit stretched, and I wonder that these kids aren't getting or could use some more support.
Right, and so thankfully, the Alliance is going to help support with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, any other councilors who haven't spoken yet? Counselor Oberg.
Do you coordinate with some of the other programs that are offered by the communities? I don't, I don't think it's very strong here in Groton, but I know in London, they have a lot of evening and they have other support systems to help people learn English, especially the children.
We, we do have an adult ed program.
Right.
And it does offer, at Westside, and so some of our students who leave Fitch High, they will go there to do night programs and they can work during the day.
Or adults.
Or adults.
Adults can, through our adult ed program, can take daytime classes at New London Adult Ed and at Westside.
You might have seen a catalog that came through that comes to all of Groton residents from New London, and that's something that we pay towards in a grant to support our, you know, our community as a whole for night, for adults.
Well, I was, I'm quite sure I read about a couple over in New London for children that came in also, tried to help them learn English, and I didn't know if there was referrals to those groups, if it's helpful, even though they.
No, that's interesting though.
Well, I will say this, we have a number of Syrian families I know in the northeast area, and there is a local consortium there that families are helping with Arabic and so forth.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for that information, and the second part of this is, beginning on page 32, at least in our packet, we have the air quality report from Northeast.
Sure.
And I just want to preface this by saying that I would ask people to keep in mind that the Board of Ed did not build the buildings, the town of Groton built the buildings, and the superintendent and the assistant superintendent are here to provide us with news, they are not the cause of any issues that might be found in the buildings, so please continue to treat our guests with respect this evening. Dr. Grineer.
Well, when, when I heard the Town Council was interested, the most important thing is we knew we had a humidity problem a year and a half ago, and so we hired a company, Phaeton O'Neill Engineering Company, and I think John sent you the whole report. But actually, even before we got the report, our staff did a couple of important things. One is, we, we work with our heating and ventilation, air conditioning, HVAC control company, and they explained a process called active dehumidification. So last summer, just this past summer, we started the active dehumidification, and it was very successful. Even with the summer camp there with the door opening and closing and on hot humid days, we were able to keep the, 99.9% of the time, the humidity was below 60%. 60% is the threshold, you want it to be below 60% in terms of supporting mold and all that sort of stuff, or not supporting mold. So we did that, and that was quite successful, and of course, now is the heating season, so the humidity problem has, has subsided. We also sort of proactively, before we got the report, we had a company come in and clean all the ducts, they were D-U-C-T, ducts, and we cleaned those, and they, of course, were 11 years old, and so that, I think that, that helped the quality of the air. There were a couple of rooms where the teachers reported, and we observed that there was moisture on the floor, so we actually took out the carpets and put in. So we actually took out the carpets and put in tile. And that, I'm delighted to report, has been 100% successful. The teacher, we actually put a humidistat in that room, and so we know that's safe and so forth. And then what we did was, we took the report, which kind of gave a five- or six-year look at this problem, and we took what they considered to be the most immediate, and that is to upgrade some of the HVAC equipment at the building. So you'll see when we come that there is a request to do the immediate work recommended, and that came to, I think, $104,000. It's, what we're thinking about as we go forward, we're really interested in this active dehumidification. Because one of the things that the engineers recommended is to replace the HVAC units on the roof, and they are extremely expensive, I think like $200,000, $200,000 apiece. I think there are 10, there are 10 units. And so, at a certain point, they're going to have to be replaced. But we are satisfied right now that with the active dehumidification, that the problem has been addressed, and we think it's under control, and we'll go forward. And when the CIP comes up, we'll actually talk to you about that at that time. If we still think the active dehumidification is working, then perhaps that will no longer be a need. When we put it in in October, we weren't 100% sure. Now we're sure about the dehumidification program. So that's where we are, and we're maintaining that.
Okay. So, just to recap, then, we will be looking at potential CIP for $104,000.
Right.
And that is the short-term fix that does the list on page 45 of our packet.
Short-term, right.
Okay, great. And then on page 46 in our packet, it breaks down the air handling units, the replacement.
That's right.
And from what I'm seeing, you're looking at all the long-term fixes total, about $482,000, and you're looking at spreading that out over, how many years do you think? About five or six years?
Five or six years, yes.
Okay. So then, the 104.
Excuse me, even that's questionable.
Okay.
You know, when you have engineers, no offense to engineers, but when they come in, they recommend, you know, sort of replace the whole shoot and match, we're not so sure. We're very satisfied with the active dehumidification.
Okay. So the biggest hit probably will be the first year, which would be the short-term fixes that are needed.
Correct.
And as you've said, you've spoken to faculty and staff there, and they feel there's an improvement based on the steps you've already taken?
Yes.
That's good to hear.
We're actually pretty engaged with the faculty, and we continue, and our staff meets with them frequently.
Very good. Okay, I will, I have other questions, but I will yield to other councilors at this point. Councilor Bordelain.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I think, you know, when did this report come out?
I think it says July on the packet.
It was July, when it was final. Because this has been an ongoing issue, and I know a lot of people in the community did speaking about it, and as the mayor so nicely put, it's obviously not necessarily your problem or your architectural structure that is to blame. But as a town concern, it is something that we need to really seriously look at, because anyone that's from here knows that that land was wet prior to building, and we built on it anyway. So it's only not shocking that we're at this point, and I think as a taxpayer and people in the community that are concerned, the concern lies with the fact that it's a brand-new building. It's, you know, 11 years old. The glulon beams, we just had to pay because the architectural structure of that needed to be coated. That was another expensive fix. And now, looking at this, over $400,000, something thousand dollars, to a taxpayer on a brand-new building that's barely 11 years old, that is a big concern. But we need it fixed, and we should fix it right and right away, is my thing. So my concern is, is the 104 going to be enough to fix it? Because I feel you can't put a price tag on air quality and safety for children in a building and staff that were getting headaches and, you know, excessive problems there. So, moving forward, will this fix be enough? And also, looking at the outside possibly needing to dredge, you know, or dig around to, I mean, the playground is barely usable. That's another concern. So that 104 won't address the playground, is that correct?
I think that's correct, yes.
So how do we make the playground usable so the children have access to be outside and use it more frequently? And what other fixes? I mean, because I'm, once again, we can say we can stagger it out over four to five years, but my concern from a, I know people don't want taxes to go up, but it's a safety concern. When you say health, I'm listening. So my concern is, what does the fix need to be to make sure children are safe and staff are safe in that building without, I'm not saying you're band-aiding it, the town band-aiding it by like putting it only doing 104 now. If we need to do $250,000 now, and maybe the rest later, I want to just, maybe we should have more negotiation, I'm not, more talks about this with the county council to really go over this, because I think this air quality packet is the largest part of our thing that we got today. And I did read through it, and I think it would be nice to have more time on that, to make sure that we're able to address it in a fair manner and to respect to the whole community and the town that we serve, so.
I talked to the chairman this morning, and she suggested that that might be something we talk about on the 5th of February.
Right, that sounds good. And I just wanted to also point out, if you go to page 46, the long-term recommendations start, and they continue over to page 47. And everything included in the long-term recommendations is, I believe, the drainage, the playground, the athletic fields, stormwater management, air handling units, and that's the 482.
That's right.
So it is included in the long-term plan.
Right, the first issue is air quality.
Right.
So hence, the safety, the short-term.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say, it's noted in the long-term, but is that really what we need to have as our long-term, is my question? And where are the decisions behind that coming from? Because putting the playground as a long-term fix, some might not be happy with. I'm just, like, if I had a student at that school that couldn't access the playground for, you know, certain amounts of days, that would be a concern. So what, you know, what are we able to do? So that's what I would like to address overall, the whole.
We could talk about it on the 5th, and I'll try to determine how many days the playground is, there's some debate, these things are not always as clear as one would like them to be. Even if we put in the drain, when I get into the, when I dig into the report, there aren't exactly assurances. So, but I think on the 5th, we can.
And then my last question to this was, considering it's only 11 years old, I know from, you know, just in general, there's usually warranties. Is any of this under any form of a warranty? I mean, I know some roofs even have, you know, 10 to 12 to 15 years, and windows. Was there any, you know, insurance on any of this stuff to ensure? I mean, I would think at 11 years, as a homeowner, one would be unhappy to have all this devastation if an architect came in and built something for one of us, and then had all of this report of $400,000 something thousand dollars worth. One would then be asking, what type of insurance do we have for this, or what type of warranty? And if there isn't, moving forward with all these buildings that we are building, what can we do as a town to protect ourselves? So that's the questions that the red flags raise for me as a whole. So is there any insurance on all these 10 units underneath that, you know?
No, they're not damaged. That was the equipment. I can tell you the lessons from this have been applied to the new schools. I've been involved in communications, making sure that the HVAC system is top-quality.
To my question, then, I guess, what I was asking is, is there any insurance on any of these units?
No.
No.
Not to my knowledge.
Has anyone looked into that section as well?
Well, they're not damaged, so I don't think insurance. Do you mean like warranty?
Well, I guess when something's not working to its potential, right? If I pick up a brand-new car, and it's a new 2019, and it's like not working, one would bring it back and say, this is defective, so it's still working, but it's not working to what I bought, to its specification. So my question is, has anyone looked into a warranty to make sure that we might have some savings? Maybe it wouldn't be 100% replaced, but there might be like a 50% reimbursement after so long, or something like that moving. I wonder if that has been checked.
Yeah, we'll look into that and get back to you on the 5th.
So it has not been checked yet?
I don't know.
No, you don't know, no, okay.
Okay, we have councilors Baumgartner, Heed, and Franco.
So, good evening. In Fosun O'Neil's final report, in section 3.5, exterior stormwater management, it reads, "A review of the construction drawing shows that the location of the school is in close proximity to a large wetland area, and that a low-lying area adjacent to the wetland was filled with what is now building areas 1 and 2 of the school. Also, it appears that there were no underdrains called out or detailed in the civil or structural drawings. The original geotechnical report that was completed as part of the school design was not provided to Fosun O'Neil for review to determine existing soil conditions prior to construction, and if underdrains were recommended." So you had mentioned that, you know, we are building new schools, and so have we done our due diligence to ensure that, one, no school is built too close to a wetland, obviously, wherever you build in Groton, you're likely to build near a wetland. But in many cases where the new schools will be built, they're going to be very, in very close proximity to wetlands. So, part one of my question is, will our new school buildings be safe from soil erosion and many of the issues that Northeast School are facing? And two, have we done the, you know, the soil research necessary to ensure that, obviously, there, you know, there won't be any issues again with the Northeast School?
So, again, the Board of Ed is not building the buildings, so we have.
They have the right person here.
Right, we do. Would you like Mr. Norris to come up?
Please.
And you could address the questions to him? Thank you. Councilor Baumgartner, I had that same paragraph all marked up in my folder.
Thank you.
If you could just introduce yourself, Mr. Norris, and use the microphone, please. Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm Rick Norris, the project manager for the schools, also the sustainability manager for the town. This issue's a school issue, however. We have looked at those, we looked at the locations of the schools. West Side is not a problem. The middle school up here is not in the wetlands. There's been borings made, looking at the depth of the groundwater, that sort of thing, and there are underdrains. There are, for example, the foundations are sealed with also a new technology that has a drain that's actually attached to the foundation, so that runs down to the underdrain. The one that's closest to the wetlands is Cutler. That will have a similar, similar work done to it. It is out of the 500-year floodplain, so we don't foresee an issue there. And actually, where the building is going to go is going to be raised a couple of feet. So those issues should be addressed. Your other issues potentially on air quality stuff, we have a new heating/cooling system, it's a chill beam system. The indoor humidity has to be around 40% to operate that system. The windows are sealed, they're not operable, so you can't open windows, for example, and allow humidity and other things in. So we've taken a lot of these things to heart as lessons learned along the way. I'd be happy to answer any other questions regarding those issues.
But if we were to have asked these questions at the time the Northeast School was built, how would we have answered them?
We would have answered them very similarly. We have issues now with rising groundwater. We see it all over the town. You can walk into Mystic and look at the drain down the side of the hill, and the drainage is continually running. So there's been an increase in some areas in groundwater. Northeast, there was borings made. We looked at the groundwater issue and where it was, and in fact, we had some water that needed to be cleaned, which we had Frank take, some environmental work there. But the borings were such that groundwater was not a particular issue there. So I'm hearing some of these things kind of third-hand and whatever, and wondering what's going on. I am in communication with the superintendent on a couple of them, so I'd be happy to continue to work with them and help them answer any of the questions you may have.
And do we have a maintenance plan with respect to all of our school buildings?
Yes.
For stormwater management moving forward?
Well, we, all of the plans have to go through wetlands, obviously. The middle school primarily is the biggest issue with the wetlands. We have to clean all the water that goes down the hill, so we have retention basins, we have runoff drains, we have a huge drainage system. Both there and at Cutler, we have what they call a gallery, where you try and maintain the water on-site as opposed to draining it off-site. So those type of issues are being addressed in that way.
Well, as extreme weather events continue to intensify and proliferate, you know, these issues won't go away, so.
Right. And the wetlands folks, I mean, the commission does a very good job asking the questions, and they get sure we're toeing the line as far as the drainage requirements for the building and where they're located.
And we'll keep appointing them, so.
Yeah, okay.
Just one of the questions that was in the paragraph that Councilor Baumgartner read, it said the original geotechnical report that was completed was not provided to Fosun O'Neil. Why was that?
Nobody asked me for it. I could probably find it, I mean, but I wasn't asked for it, so I don't know if the department was asked for it at all.
Interesting, okay.
So we could certainly look for it.
I'm not sure, I'm not an engineer, I don't know if it would be helpful to them, but perhaps before the work starts, it would be good for them to be able to see it.
Right. You asked about warranties, too. There's no long-term warranties on these equipments, but the installations there, the technology that was installed, the technologies available at the time, there were heat wheels, there was a heat recovery systems, there was any number of things on the available technology. I can tell you, over the last 10 years, things have changed tremendously.
Okay, we have, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
Councilor Heed and then Franco.
Okay, so just one question. I appreciate how you laid everything out and prioritized what's critical, what's less critical. And I'm trying to follow the problems identified to where they're being resolved. So when it comes to the exhaust fans, it's unpleasant, but not, probably not critical. So I'm not sure where in the plan those are being replaced.
February 5th, we'll talk to you about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Gotcha. Councilor Franco.
I was really long-prepared as to the short-term tonight.
I haven't commuted the report to memory.
All right, very good. We can accept that. Councilor Franco.
So as I've read this, and you take a tally and a total of everything, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the total price to fix everything at that school is $1.3 million? Is that correct?
I don't have the figures in front of me, but that sounds about right. Because what they said was, we should replace the units on the roof, and frankly, I'm skeptical of that.
Right.
And so is Mr. Kilpatrick. But we'll see.
Because I think that's an awful lot of money for.
It is.
A school for, that's only 11 years old. And as Mr. Norris has said, there's a part of this that's missing, and that was the engineering study from before they built the building to see how the land was and saturation levels and things of that nature. So it's hard to question some of these things. But I think sometimes we have a history in our town with schools, and it's a big history on how.
I'll tell you one fact that was sort of surprising to Mr. Kilpatrick. They did a bore of the slab, thinking that the water table would be quite high, and it wasn't. The humidity is not coming in from the bottom up. We actually think it's coming in from the air. Hence, the dehumidification process. The engineers were surprised, and Mr. Kilpatrick was very surprised, that the slab actually is pretty dry.
Right. So, like, the fields are wet.
Right.
But then, the humidity is coming in through the air conditioning units? Is that what you're saying? The air handlers?
Well, yeah, I think the ambient air, yes.
Okay, so, for a school of that size, I mean, the engineers that we had designing the school, were they, did they miss something?
No, everybody likes to think that. I mean, I don't think they missed anything. There is a requirement for the state for a certain amount, percentage of direct outside air. There are specific requirements for CO2, for those sort of things, which are all monitored in the schools. This, I can't explain it because I don't have that much information on it, but we could certainly, you know, help look into it. But I don't think, I don't, at this point, I don't know what the equipment issue would be, if there is one. You know, cleaning the ducts is certainly something that needs to be done, and maybe a little more than 10, 11 years down the road. I mean, you clean them because that's a health issue, too, besides a ventilation issue, so those sorts of things. But, you know, to get to the bottom of it, it's probably going to take, I haven't seen their study, so I could take a look at their study and.
So you haven't read this study?
No, I haven't seen it, so.
And you don't know what the recommendations are, then?
Nope, I do not. So I could take a look at it and see, and talk with Dr. Granier and his staff.
So when they brought the people in to check the school out, you were not asked to be part of that?
No.
Okay. I think I'll have to wait with some more of my questions, because there seems to be some information that needs to be shared. Thank you.
Yeah, if you could send your questions, we'll be ready on the 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Obree.
I was just going to suggest as a courtesy that we table our questions until, until we get prepared for that part of it. We didn't realize it was going to be broken up. So I do apologize for the fact that we're probably getting a little ahead of ourselves. So maybe if you can all communicate a little bit and then come back and then...
Sure.
And we'll try to, if possible, send you our questions and have a much more productive conversation.
Do any of the councilors who haven't spoken yet wish to speak? So it would be Councilors Appari and Melendez. Counselor Bordelon.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Obree, but a part of me as a parent in the town and speaking on behalf of other parents in the town, this report, this was identified months before July in the school, from what I understand. Then the report came out in July, which is stamped here. It seems to me that we need to come up with a plan in this town to collaborate a little bit better. It seems when this happened, everyone should have been called to the table and even the council as well, if needed, to talk, you know, like I think we're just getting this report officially discussed before us now, and we're in almost February. So I, I would just think that maybe we should come up with a plan to better serve the community and all the schools as a, a town, and, and maybe pull all of the bodies of the town in to discuss this more in detail much sooner. Like August 1st, you know, when this came out, and bringing everybody around the table sooner would be my hope. And I agree. I mean, I could go on. I reviewed the whole report and spent several days reviewing it, prepared to answer my, ask my questions tonight, because I was given the whole report. And I just think that, okay, now we'll do it on the 5th, but I think we should come up with another plan as to how we're going to communicate. You haven't seen the report yet, he wasn't asked for a thing, the report states things are missing. So I feel like we, as a community, somewhat have dropped the ball, and, and I think we need to pick up the pieces.
Just a quick question. February, sorry, February 5th, there's Town Council, Board of Ed, and RTM joint meeting. Could I have the time and place for that, please?
Six thirty right here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And will that platform be enough time to discuss this report?
Counselor Bordelon?
Sorry, will this, will that platform, this is a joint meeting with the RTM, and I know we're tabling this till then, kind of?
We didn't say we were tabling anything. There's, there's not a motion on the floor, there's nothing to table. This was information that was being presented to us.
So I apologize for using the word "table." I was stating that we were making a recommendation because they can't answer the questions tonight.
Well, if you send us your questions, we'll answer them on the 5th. There'll be sufficient time.
There'll be sufficient time on that meeting on the 5th to do such.
The, the point of that meeting, I believe, was to discuss overall budget and to have the RTM, the Town Council, Board of Ed kind of sit and talk like we did last year. And it was very productive last year, where we all expressed our concerns and kind of our expectations. And it worked out very well, because I think the budget went very smoothly last year when we had that opportunity to sit around the table together and talk. So the bulk of the meeting will be spent on that. But if the council so desires, we could also continue the discussion that evening, if that's the desire of the whole council. Was that the desire of the whole council, to continue it that night? Yes, okay. So is that okay, Dr. Grenier?
Yeah, just send me the questions, then we'll be prepared.
Very good. So if we can get the questions to you in advance, that would be more helpful than asking that evening, since we've all had a chance to read the report. Mr. Burton?
I was just going to say, if we can get the questions to them quick enough, it'd be nice if they could send those answers in advance, so we don't have to sit there and read through each and everything. So that you can just do follow-up questions.
Right. And then that meeting could be spent for the original purpose, which was to do the budget. So that would be very good. Counselor Franco.
Can we also send these to the permanent school building? Is that, who was in charge of overseeing the building at that time?
No, actually, Public Works builds the buildings. The permanent school building committee is, is more involved with design oversight. So as far as the construction, most construction decisions, unless they, they involve major changes or change orders or that sort of thing, the permanent school building committee is certainly kept informed as, as oversight. But actually, the Public Works Director is responsible in the town for doing the construction of all those facilities. So me working under him will report directly to, to my boss. We're responsible for that.
Would it be possible, if they're in attendance, maybe to answer some engineering-type questions?
Who?
So, so why don't, why don't we get our questions to the manager? The manager can then sort through and figure out what needs to go to Mr. Hanover, what needs to go to Dr. Grenier, what needs to go to Mr. Norris, and then they could work on getting answers. But the sooner we ask the questions, the quicker we can get things resolved and move on with things. So I would just ask all of you, come up with your questions and get them to the manager as quickly as you can, please. One last question.
So that meeting's not televised, correct?
I don't know.
Right, so for public transparency, as we're televised tonight, I think there's people that are concerned about this and want to hear what's going on, that might not be able to attend that meeting. So I think coming back and having frequent updates about this issue, since it's a, you know, and it's, looking at it on paper, it's a huge cost to the town, there should be a way that we add this to the agenda and have updates so that people can track and know what we're planning to do. But that meeting, it's not televised, and that's where I think, you know, having that on here is important.
Counselor Heaton?
I would also suggest, if we're asking questions by email, that the answers be presented, like, kept together so that they can be part of the public record and not just disappear into email where they aren't shared.
All right, Counselor Obree.
Well, I, I'm going to say that I, I don't agree with doing it that way. I think it's too much. If we're going to come in here and we're going to be talking about the budget, I think we should come in and talk about the budget. And I think perhaps at another time, it's convenient for our superintendent and his assistant to have a conversation on these other two parts of this. I, I think it would be too rushed. We could send you questions, but it doesn't create the dialogue that sometimes is needed. So I would ask that this be done a little differently and that we approach things separately. Think we could do that, Joan?
It's up to the council.
So, so...
Well, I was...
Right. So the, the goal of that meeting, the joint council, Board of Ed, RTM meeting, was, as I said before, was to come together on budget issues. So the bulk of the time would be spent, as, as per Moderator Ebbin, as per Chairperson Watson and myself, the three of us scheduled that meeting for budget purposes. So if any time was going to be spent on this particular issue, it would be relegated to the bottom of the agenda for that meeting. And I'm getting the feeling that there's going to be a lot of talking. So would you prefer just to put this on the next COW in February? I don't know what that COW is looking like.
I don't have the list with me.
Yeah, I don't either.
Yeah, I'd have to get back to you.
So would, would the, is it the pleasure of the council to put this on a COW rather than trying to put it on to that budget meeting? I'm seeing no's and I'm seeing yeses. So the, the only, how many, just consensus, would like it as a separate item? Okay. So do you want to try to convince us otherwise?
We have had meetings that have gone very late, and we don't know what that COW is going to be. If we're just talking about the school budget, I mean, our meetings usually go maybe an hour, hour and a half tops, that I can remember. And I don't see why we couldn't just have this as well as in one meeting.
So if, has anyone changed their view on this?
We, we are going to put this in as a, as a CIP issue. So there will be another evening. I, I was interpreting many of your questions to be financial questions. And, you know, we, we are, we have remediated humidity problem. We remediated it in May. We, it preceded the report. Once we figured out that we could do it, we did it. And in the, for me, the, the issue is, what is the prudent way to move forward financially? So to, to me, it's a CIP issue. And there will be sufficient time to, to handle it on those nights.
Counselors Appari.
I understand that this started out because kids were getting sick with the odor and the, nobody, no one was getting sick.
Not that I know of. No, there was a, there was a concern that there was excess humidity and mold was starting to develop on carpets and so forth, and that's why we remediated it.
So you got rid of the carpets and you put in the...
Well, we got rid of the carpets in a couple of times.
Yeah. But is the problem resolved?
Yes. Well, the problem of the humidity is resolved. There are some ancillary problems, like the playground does get flooded from, from time to time. So when we brought in the engineering company, they, you know, they, they took a kind of a global look at it.
So the playground has been flooded a couple of times, but most of the time it's usable?
Right.
Okay.
Counselor Melendez, did you wish to speak? Counselor Baumgartner, did you wish to speak? Counselor Bordelon?
So looking at the HVAC system, and I kind of look at Northeast Academy, me and Catherine Kornowski as sister schools, have we cleaned those air ducts?
Yes.
Yeah.
Say, we're doing the same. We're doing an active dehumidification at both schools.
And, and the systems at Northeast Academy are operating, I'm not, Catherine Kornowski are fine?
Yep. Same as Northeast.
No, what I'm asking is, it's, it's not the same as Northeast, because Northeast is having the problem.
No, Northeast's problem has been remedied. It's over.
So, okay.
The humidity problem is over.
Thank you. So since Counselor Franco had a chance to try to persuade, so how many would like to have this on the joint Town Council Committee, the whole RTM meeting?
If there's time available.
Well, we, we're going to need to know in advance, so we need to commit one way or another, that way people can be prepared. So, all right, so how many wanted it as a separate item?
Oh, separate item?
Separate item? Raise your hand, please. No, no, separate meeting, separate night, separate item, separate meeting. How many wanted it that way, please? Four, five? Okay, so that's the majority. So it won't be on the joint meeting, then? It'll be a separate item, because the majority asked for it that way. Thank you very much. All right, very good. So we are to the last item that you brought with us, which, thank you, Mr. Norris. We are to the last item, which is the Alliance District stuff. And there's, this starts on page 97, and there is the beginning of the list of expenditures. Are you handling this?
So I'm giving you an active double-sided sheet that shows you the Alliance expectations. And I'm going to talk you through this. We also have extra paper or extra sheets for the people in the audience.
May I just ask, is this the same as what we have in our packet?
Exactly.
Exactly, thank you. So then I don't need an extra one for the minutes. Thank you.
So this is a perfect segue to some of the questions that the council has asked. So what, now what, after we leave the data? And two years ago, two, three years ago, when we became an Alliance District, we were given a $600,000 fund to support the district plan. It didn't come till late, and we were able to provide additional resources. I wanted to read to you, according to the Connecticut State Department of Education, Alliance District plans are locally conceived, evidence-based reform plans that propose detailed initiatives for improving student achievement. So there are four categories that, with specific attributes that we have to consider in the plan. So there's talent, academics, culture and climate, and operations. Those are the four categories. Within the categories, I'm going to talk you through what our plan is and, and the spending that goes with it to address some of the needs in our district. So again, this year, last year, we didn't get any funding, funding, but this year, we're getting $600,000 that comes straight to the Board of Ed to address the issues and to hopefully close some of those gaps and to make sure that all of our kids are moving and growing. And so under talent, we're looking at things like recruitment, professional development, coaching, and leadership development, as specified by the Connecticut State Department of Education. So in our plan specifically, we're looking at a recruitment of highly qualified staff to increase minorities in our district, especially in our teaching force, and through a scholarship program called Grow Your Own Initiative, which would help support some of our paraprofessionals who are interested in teaching, especially our minority paraprofessional staff, to actually help them to go back to school to get that teaching degree. Last year, or a couple of years ago, when we did this, we actually had that happen, and the two of the teachers have come back and are teaching for us. So that's always really good to see. We have an extensive HR plan that deals with this in looking to have even some of our students come back and want to become teachers and come back to be able to teach here. There's also, we started probably three years with having our staff understand bias, and so we did a bias, understanding bias training with administrators. The Board of Ed is very interested in this. And so we are going to be hiring back the person who had done the first few presentations, and she's actually going to be presenting on the 13th of March during our Professional Development Day. And she'll be presenting three times to three different groups of teachers as part of this. Another part that we're really looking to advance our teachers with a teacher leadership program and also administrative leadership with a coaching model. It helps with the sustainability for so many of our initiatives, when you have teachers in the building who are able, like literacy specialists and math specialists and, and grade-level teachers, department chairs, who can help continue initiatives and work with their colleagues and get training and do more of like a train-the-trainer model, so they can come back and work with all of their colleagues. Usually colleagues have a strong voice, and teachers do listen to their own colleagues. So we've had some success with this. So it would provide training for teachers in all of our buildings through this leadership component, and they could come back to share with others. The mentor training, we have a Connecticut team training for our one- and two-year teachers. We want to grow our mentor program so that we have mentors throughout our schools. At this point, we have a few in every building, but really to give them better access to teachers who might be teaching the same grade level or the same subject area, this would enhance that for them. So we actually do have several teachers who've been involved in this program this year, so this will add to that, so we can kind of widen that group. And then as part of that HR plan, I was talking about really making sure that we do a really good job with minority teacher recruitment. That's under talent. Under academics, that's the Common Core, the Connecticut Core Standards, it's looking at assessments. Supporting special populations, as Ms. Bordelon had mentioned, the SRBI, Scientifically Research-based Intervention Program, special populations like EL and Special Education. So we really want to do a comprehensive look at what our SRBI program, pre-K through 12, and have teachers work together, get some assistance from the state of Connecticut to make sure that we're doing the best we can for our kids and to make sure that no matter what school they're in at the elementary level, we'll have one Groton Middle School, so it's important to have what's happened at Cutler and what's happened at Westside to kind of come together to make sure that we're giving kids the best opportunities. We would like to add an EL teacher at the middle school level. The figure that you see in front of you is for the rest of this year, because we're already into semester two. But there is a plan to have another $300,000 Alliance for next year, and we want to sustain that. We also, we talked about assessment data, so it's really important to have that data disaggregated at the district level, at the school level, so to get analysis support and working with principals and with the district to make sure that we're monitoring carefully and making sure we're closing the gap. Additionally, we, those professional services that can help us with that writing of the curriculum or writing of that sustainable plan, and then inquiry-based instruction, this is really, we're really strengthening our college career readiness, especially in the area of careers. We've talked about this manufacturing pipeline at the high school, the careers program at the high school, using inquiry-based instruction. So we're really kind of focusing on middle school and high school in this area and making sure that teachers have the right training to be able to deliver this inquiry approach and to make sure that we have our kids college and career-ready. In addition, we're looking at supply software for SRBI, expanding classroom libraries, and using National Science Foundation math materials, so some direct supplies for both in the classroom and beyond the classroom. Under climate, that's where we see family engagement, using wraparound services. Chronic absenteeism is a problem, and we want to address it. That is one of our problems, and... That is one of our problems, and, you know, we are tracking the data on that. So, one of the things that we have in our district are community coordinators in each building, and we afford that through a Title grant, but we want to expand their hours. They're a great resource. They're usually members of the school community, and either their kids have gone through the schools and they've come back to help out, or their kids are currently in the schools, and so they're a great resource to help support our buildings and offer support to our families. We're looking to have a social worker at the middle school to help track attendance. Last year, through another Title IV grant, we were able to get an additional social worker at the high school to help out with, you know, not only attendance, but kids who really are struggling, kids who might, you know, have, you know, situations in their family that need support, that might not graduate, so to really intervene sooner than later. And then, I think you know that we've had healthy development, the mental health summits in the district for the past six years. It's a collaborative between the town, the city, Children First Groton, and the schools, and so we would like to do another summit in the spring. It's kind of a nominal cost. We all volunteer and come out to do the work, but there are some marketing and some information that needs to get out and some supplies that are needed. Under operations, this is where we look at technology integration, student enrollment process, and extended learning. And one of the things that our Board of Education was really firm on is how can we provide tutoring before and after school to kids in all nine of our buildings to really help out with reading, writing, math, and science? So, we've already put that out for teachers, so they'll be able to do some of that work, and we really are communicating that. We'll be communicating that to families, and fortunately, at the middle school and the high school, we have a late bus, so kids can stay after and then get a bus ride home, and we're going to do everything that we can to make sure our elementary children, too, can get that support. There's some data support and grant management involved with keeping track of the Alliance Grant. We have to monitor every month and give information to the state of Connecticut, test scores, absenteeism, you know, all those things. And they also look at teacher attendance as well as student attendance. And then, looking at tutoring supplies, there's a registration software that will connect with Power School and do a much better job for us in keeping track of our kids and making sure that we've got efficiencies and accuracies with enrollment data, which is very important. And then, our high school, and some of you know about this already, but we've had some problems with our smart boards that were, you know, put in years ago, so this will really help us get a jump start at the high school, starting with the high school on those projection devices that are in the front end of the school. So, we've put in a big chunk of money for that, so we're really happy about that.
Very good. Take this a lot to take in, and I'm sure we all have questions about this. It is 7:45, and Councilor Parker has joined us. Thank you for attending that meeting on our behalf. Councilor Franco?
So, I'm very excited that Groton received this money and that you're spending it so wisely, and one thing I'm very excited about is like usually when you look at your budget and it's very staff-heavy, that's where all the money goes to, is, you know, teachers, and I understand all that and benefits, but I was very excited to see that they're going to expand the classroom libraries and have math materials and some software, so that really excited me that there's going to actually be things for the kids.
Right.
So, I'm very excited.
And those, and those devices in the front so kids can really see what's on the smart board.
Yeah.
Whatever we did, we wanted to be, we wanted to use the money wisely and be able to sustain it. So, using a lot of the money, with $600,000, which is wonderful, but to not have the next dose of it, which we don't, I don't think we're going to get another $600, and then, and then the year after, well, next year, fortunately, we'll have $300,000, then the year after that, we don't think.
You just can't count on it, you know?
Right, right, definitely.
And we were able to say, look at our data, look at our plans and our initiatives and say, what's going to work best for kids?
It has to be spent by the end of June, so we're trying to, you know, do a lot of good with the money, even though we're
In a short
Literally just, was it approved today? We're waiting for the state.
No, I have not heard from her yet.
So.
I had to put in a whole plan over the holidays, so I had to write this all up with SMART goals. It's quite a process, but, and that's what will be tracked, so when we're looking at student growth or decline of chronic absenteeism, you know, we're monitoring that every month.
Right. Well, thank you. We have Councilor Bordelone and Baumgartner?
So, thank you for this presentation. We did receive one Alliance Grant initially, right, when we first came on?
We did, a couple of years ago, right.
All right. Just wanted to make sure, because I was like, wait a minute, I think we have gotten one. So, this will support hiring English as a second language teacher?
Yes.
And if we stop becoming an Alliance District, which one would, I would think would want not to be, we're going to find a way to fund that, though.
Right.
The other thing, when I'm looking at children's success in our community, is making sure people, students have a proper, healthy meal, and I know recently we passed where the West Side, the Title I, the schools in our district that are identified as Title I schools, West Side, Claude Chester, and
Catherine Kolnowski.
Catherine Kolnowski, sorry. I know with the merge, will that benefit still carry to the new middle school?
We're hopeful.
We're not sure.
I'm not sure.
We believe it, it might, at least for one year.
And the need for that program to be at the high school. So, when you're looking at Title I funds that we get to help Title I kids that are in need, and then you're looking at this, I see a need to make sure that we're funding that free lunch for all kind of initiative.
We're fortunate to have Ernie Koschmeter, who runs our enterprise fund for the food, for our lunch and breakfast program. He also feeds our kids all summer long. So, he has spearheaded a lot of these opportunities and has turned every rock over to see how we can feed our kids because we think it's really important.
Right, and I think there's grants out there, so it would be really nice to have that move towards the high school and continue in the middle school because if a child has the proper nutrition that only increases their ability to learn.
Makes a big difference, absolutely.
So, I did see that part on here, and the attendance piece at the high school, I see a little bit on here, but it'd be interesting to see the ways in which you're going to work that, so that you guys hired a counselor, it looks like? And that's going to be absorbed when the Alliance District money is gone, how will that work with that position?
Well, we are consolidating schools, and we're looking to have some cost avoidance. So, we're looking to, through that process, we're looking for those efficiencies so that you can keep a social worker, but you might have fewer of something else.
And then, my last piece of this, where I think we're kind of, my opinion, missing a little bit of it, is up at the high school, we only have a part-time career counselor for a whole student body that spends a lot of time with college readiness, and when you look at the percent of kids going to college, that's great, but there's a large percent of kids that aren't, and some of those kids might be identified in that need group where you're looking at Title I funds and Alliance money, and so having a full-time or a secondary part-time career counselor who's truly invested in that part, who's not stretched, only part-time, is that, has that been talked about?
That has come to our attention. We've got a few things that we're looking at, yeah.
Okay, and you're looking at ways to maybe fund that or get a grant or something?
Yep.
Well, not a grant, but the board's considering it.
Okay, and that was just another thing that I think would really help with the whole Alliance District in improving the quality.
That has come to our attention, for sure.
Thank you, thank you for your
Councilor Baumgartner?
Well, first and foremost, thank you so much for your very thorough presentation. Just to piggyback off of some of Councilor Bordelone's remarks, you know, saying the social worker, and obviously the emphasis on minority teacher recruitment, you know, the in-classroom technology piece and upgrades there, inquiry-based instruction, I think those are all the right priorities, but also in line with kind of separating, you know, sort of general fund spending as opposed to Alliance Fund spending, so really, you know, identifying those priorities. So, just out of curiosity, how do you prioritize those spending decisions in creating, in alignment with?
Yeah.
The first priority is what I mentioned to Councilor Franco. We want to be sure we can sustain them. So, when we got the money, you know there are four categories, so we looked at talent, academics, operations, and climate. We looked at the data. The data clearly point to the issue of attendance, so that's what led us to the social worker perspective at the high school. We also looked at the English language learners at the middle school. The data there indicated, and frankly, we're getting more, and not a huge percent, but about 3% of our student body doesn't speak English as their native language, and so we knew we needed help there.
What is the percentage again?
About three.
Thirty percent.
And then, and then we looked at, as I said, the technology. Technology is always a great way to use, especially for a non-sustaining grant. We wanted to get these projection devices at the, particularly at the high school, so that will be good, hopefully, for another eight to 10 years.
And if you could summarize it in maybe 30 seconds, because I know we're short on time, but how would you describe Groton becoming, what process did Groton go through to become an Alliance District, and why did that happen?
There were, there were three districts that basically scored out of it. They didn't, they didn't, the socioeconomic of the, it's called an accountability index. Three districts were exited from the Alliance District, and when their towns looked at the financial impact, they went back to the legislature and demanded that they be, remain Alliance Districts, but they had already identified the next three, and so they compromised and made 33, which is a fine thing to do, but they gave Groton no money. So, we, we're an Alliance District, but we got no money, and we got a one-time shot of $600,000, and then this year, thanks to Senator Summers, we got another $600,000. But, but the districts, the other Alliance Districts get millions of dollars a year, every year. So, good to be an Alliance District because in Groton, it means about $7 million, I estimate. The day we stop being an Alliance District, our $25 million education cost sharing grant will go down to 18. So, part of me, I guess I shouldn't say it publicly, but financially, Groton is well-served to be an Alliance District. Fifty percent of our children are eligible for free and reduced lunch, so when you, when you see those scores that Susan showed of other Alliance Districts, you know, what struck me was when we were, when we were going through district reference group from A to G, when you look at, when you look at the bottom three groups, we were talking about them, and I said, isn't that funny? I know all those districts, and those were the Alliance Districts, and Groton, Groton is in that, in that district reference group. The thing, going back to what Councilor Melendez said, that I find, I'm most proud of, is that we are an Alliance District, which is, according to the state, the part of the 33 lowest performing, but we're higher than the state average. So, that's counterintuitive. Something funny is going on at Groton. The kids are scoring so well, and yet we're an Alliance District, but we get the $8 million, so I'm not complaining.
So, I hope, I hope in the long term and even the short term, we can identify what some of those issues are, and perhaps
Right.
The Alliance funding itself can, you know, perhaps solve some of those problems or identify what some of those problems may be. But, you know, I would argue, while the Alliance funding is great, you know, and especially the work of our entire legislative delegation, long-term, I think we need to, you know, articulate too hard for that it's important that, you know, we seek more ECS funding, more equitable, you know, formula, especially given our military population.
You're a hundred
There's a lot of nuances there.
That's the key. The state of Connecticut has fiddled with this education cost sharing, but about eight years ago, they said, look, this is not working. We, the state, need to provide additional funding to those districts that have the highest percentage of children who live at a level, economic level, where they are eligible for free and reduced lunch, they don't speak English or, as their native language, or their special education. The state calls those kids high-needs. So, the state came along eight years ago and said, we need to give more money to those high-needs districts, and, you know, we are, 50% of our kids are high-needs, but we're above the state average in achievement scores, so that's why I feel really terrific about, we've got some needy kids, we've got some, you know, wonderful students, and they are achieving at relatively high levels, but as Susan said, we're not satisfied.
We're not done.
Good, that's good to hear. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate all the time you've given us tonight.
You're welcome.
And we will see you on the 5th, and we're going to take a five-minute recess. Thank you. And Councilors, I need to ask a process question, please, so don't hit the bathroom yet. Thank you, we're back from recess at 8:05. Councilor Baumgartner, did you want to make a motion, sir?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move up item 5E 2020-44 Mystic Education Center Development Agreement and Project Overview.
Second?
Move by Baumgartner, seconded by he, any discussion on suspending the rules to move 2020-44 up in the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. We are on item 5E 2020-44 Mystic Education Center, and this is on page 159 in your packet, and they will be looking for a motion after the presentation. Do we want the motion now, or, I'm trying to think. Okay, why don't we hear from everybody if you'd like to? Mr. Reiner, I'll let you lead and introduce everybody, please?
Sure.
Just if you could, if you're speaking, use a microphone, that way it's captured for the videographer. Thank you.
All right, so first we'll do introductions. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Next to me, Paige Bronk, Economic and Community Development Manager. Eric Callahan, one of the town attorneys, and over here, the Ressplur team.
Ray Carhon.
Gary O'Connor.
Jeff Ressplur.
All right, so thank you. So, tonight, we're here to talk about the larger project of the Mystic Education Center redevelopment project. Talk a little bit about the framework of how this whole project has come together to this point, the numerous steps that have to be taken forward through the permitting process over the next year plus, and then what happens after that. Working with Ressplur and the state over the past number of years, trying to get this property that's been sitting idle for many, many years, for over 40 years, the town has been talking about, what do we do with the Mystic Education Center property? And a few years back, Paige Bronk and myself met with representatives from DECD. They gave us a brownfields grant so that we could begin the marketing and promotion of this property through an extensive marketing, RFP process, working with many state agencies. We picked Ressplur Homes, working with the state, and gave them that preferred developer status. Since that time, we've been working towards certain agreements, so as of now, there's a signed purchase and sales agreement between Ressplur and the state of Connecticut. Ressplur's been working on a lease agreement between them and the state, and at the same time, the town has been working towards the development of a development agreement, which is steps to how do we move forward in cooperation, and that's one of many steps that we'll kind of get into in a few minutes, and Eric Callahan has been doing a tremendous amount of work on behalf of the town on that particular item. So, I'm going to hand it over to Paige to talk a little bit about the framework of all of the things that we need to do to keep this project moving forward. I've heard from a number of people that, oh, why is this taking so long? And I've also heard from a number of people of, well, this is going way too fast, and no development has been approved yet, nothing has been guaranteed, no zoning has even been written and presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at this point in time. So, there's a lot of steps that we need to go through. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Paige. You can talk a little bit about that framework and then the things that we're looking to discuss in more detail with you tonight.
Thank you.
I think it's important for, it's important for the public to understand a little bit about timeframe. So, the project has been involved, it was identified as a need really over a decade ago, a couple decades ago, and within the past three to four years, there's been a lot of traction to get the project to get the project where it needs to be. In terms of future timeframe, it was just early November. We did this public outreach meeting, and people can understand where we're at. We're not going to be anywhere near any significant construction until 2021. 2020 should basically be put on people's calendar as an important year for planning, design, engineering, studies, permitting, all of that. There's a lot of legwork that has to happen. And I think it is important for the public and also the council to understand the major steps that are involved before we get really too far down the line. I'd like to read a few of those. John already talked about the sales, purchase and sale agreement. Also, the lease agreement, which is a different document. Recently, Ressplur has been successful in dealing with the state in getting that lease agreement signed so we can secure the building. Lot of vandalism. It's my understanding, next week, they'll actually have keys and hopefully try to increase in security on the property. Other key steps, we've already started the public outreach, but that'll continue. The development agreement that John talked about, we want to focus on mostly tonight. But also other steps, Pratt Building reuse, planning and engineering. We will really kick that off next week in understanding how we're going to repurpose the Pratt Building for the public's use. The Pratt Building Future Lease Agreement. We haven't even begun that document. That'll be something that will require significant effort and diligence. The zoning amendment for that property so that we can basically tailor the regulations to match our quality development proposal. After the zoning amendment, we're dealing with land use and zoning approvals. Also, the subdivision of the parcel. Additionally, Ressplur has been working on some land assembly. The Tax Increment Financing Master Plan for the project. Separate apart from that would be the Tax Increment Financing Credit Enhancement Agreement. Project Design and Engineering involving Ressplur and Fussin O'Neill Engineering and others. Roadway Improvement Designs and Permitting. Federal Historic Preservation Tax Credits. Trail System Plan Development. And Environmental Remediation of the Property. That's not an all-inclusive listing. The purpose of giving those bullets is so that people understand we have a significant way to go. And we really are at the beginning stages of this. And we're really happy to have Ressplur as our partner. The key step moving forward is this development agreement. That's really why we're here tonight. But I think giving the backdrop is important for the public and the council. So as John mentioned, the development agreement in simple terms is a framework. It is a framework that builds and formalizes a cooperative relationship, a partnership between Ressplur and the town. The key elements of the agreement, we're not going to go through in great detail in the event there are questions. Both Gary and Eric are here tonight to answer those questions. They were the ones that spent most of the time on it. But I think it's important to know what some of the key highlights are in this document. As I said, it basically forges this partnership between the town and Ressplur. It has a definitions section within the agreement. It gives a project description, basically a mixed-use development between 700, 850 multifamily units. The oral school building to be used with 100,000 square feet of multi-use commercial space. The Pratt Building rehabilitation, retail use, recreational use, parking, trails, roads, energy efficiency. The cooperative agreement identifies Ressplur as the exclusive developer for the property. It addresses development plan details and requirements, including a sequence and phasing for the redevelopment project. It addresses governmental approvals required and responsible entities. It addresses a short-term tax agreement, which is really a result of the state's leasing the property during the approval phase. That's a very short-term window. Commitment of Ressplur to make property improvements consistent with the plans that both parties have agreed, the town and Ressplur. Commitment of Ressplur to make improvements to the Pratt Building, that's the recreation building, as agreed by the town and Ressplur. Commitment of the town to enter into future lease agreement of the Pratt Building for its operation once the property has been rehabbed to acceptable standards of use. Commitment of Ressplur to make onsite and offsite infrastructure improvements, including roadways and utilities. Project preliminary timeline by phase. The use of tax increment financing. Commitment towards cooperation between the town and Ressplur. The following are more legal terms, restrictions on transfer and assignment. Dispute resolution, good faith slash negotiation slash mediation. Default and remedies section, signatures. And then, of course, attachments. Attachments include the description of the property, resolution from the town council, authorizing entry into this development agreement, proposed property subdivisions, and project phases.
We can't stress enough that the development agreement does not guarantee any land use, lease, or other approvals, that this is a document that is helping to set the framework for how we mean to cooperate and move towards a common goal for the development of this property in the future. So I can't stress that enough. This doesn't guarantee any approvals. It's something that we want to strive towards and the things that, the goals that we're all working towards in that development agreement. So with that, I don't know if Gary wanted to make a few comments about the development agreement or kind of where we are.
Sure. I think that you and Paige laid it out very well. I've done a number of these agreements, mostly from municipalities throughout the state. And I have to say, it was incredible working with your team. The professionalism and expertise was unbelievable. And they're right, this is just the framework. I look at it as this is kind of the town's and the Ressplur developments roadmap to the project and the relationship between the parties. And it sets performance standards for the developer. I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces. So you need to have some document that says, okay, how do we move forward? And this development agreement sets that out with certain timelines for getting zoning approvals, certain timelines for getting engineering done, providing you with kind of a development plan that you can use as your, as like the performance standard. So you understand what we're going to do. And if we don't do it, you have something to enforce against us. So it's that important master document. And as both Paige and John emphasize, this is the first step. You know, all the different approvals before the land use boards are separate and distinct, and they have their own authority. But we're very excited about hopefully getting this signed so that the clock starts and we can move forward with you to build this great project.
Thank you. Councilor Overy, would you like to make the motion? Then we can open it up for discussion if people have questions.
I'm thrilled to do this. Motion to recommend a resolution to authorize Town Manager John Burke to execute the development agreement between the Town of Groton and Ressplur Homes LLC. I so move.
Moved by Overy and seconded by Parker. Do any of the councilors have questions for the team that's here tonight? Councilors of Perry.
I'd just like to say, we've heard presentations on this very same group before in executive session when this was. And we have been enthusiastic about this development. I don't know that we need to ask a whole lot of questions. I don't need to ask any more questions because I am so hopeful that this will continue to develop. This is just one more stage in it. And I'm happy to know that it's now in the public arena rather than just in the executive session. So I think you guys are doing a great job. And I'd like to see you carry on. I'm in favor of signing the agreement.
Councilor Franco.
All right. So I read the whole contract last night. It was quite long. It wasn't easy. It was a lot of legal jargon in there. But I do have questions just because I'm not an attorney. So the first question I have is on our Page packet, which I don't know. You have, I guess this is in the definition. If I can get a quick explanation on what letter O is?
What page are you on, Councilor Franco?
I'm on 166 of our packet.
166. Thank you.
Need the microphone.
A force majeure event is if something out of the control of the parties occurs, then they're not going to be held in default for that issue occurring. So an act of God or something along those lines.
So then I would like to know, in section 3.04, which is flexibility?
Page 169.
Page 169. And compared to? Oh my gosh, I have this all semi-organized.
He's got it. Okay.
So you said section 3.04 flexibility, and you're comparing it to which section? Page 184, which is section 15.13, which is an amendment and waiver approvals.
If I may.
Sure.
Initially, a development plan will be provided to the town. It's called the initial development plan. And in it, we set forth what we think are the basic benchmarks and plan. But that may change and be subject to changes that the zoning or planning commission dictate. So we always put in a provision like that, whether I'm representing town or developer, so everyone understands that whatever we submit initially is not final word because all the various agencies and boards have to give their input. And so the plan as originally formulated may change somewhat. Hopefully not too much. But so we put that in there so there's an understanding on both sides that that may happen.
Okay. So what would be flexible and what would require an amendment or waiver? What's the difference? That's all I'm wondering.
You know, if there's changes in, you know, minor changes to design or location, you know, that's something that I think is contemplated within this agreement. I mean, if there's a major wholesale change to the project where it's no longer going to be this size, but, you know, 100 units. And that would require an amendment.
There was other questions? I had about, so one of them was about the taxes, where if you leased, and there was a possibility of the property being taxed, no more than $25,000. And this is in my page 173. It's section 5.07, and it starts, I think, in B. So it says in there, the tax agreement shall last no more than one year following the closing. So my question is, where does that go into relation if there's a tax incremental financing? Because there's also a timeline for that, as well as I read. And there were some things that I wasn't sure of. How does that blend together and work? Can you explain?
Paige was looking like, or Mr. Bronk was looking like he wanted to answer, but I'm not sure if you want the attorney to?
I think Eric is the most accurate.
Sure. So under the town's TIF policy, there's not supposed to be double-dipping with tax incentives. And in section 507B, it says right in there that there will not be double-dipping between the tax agreement and the TIF. And the way the tax agreement came about was the state currently owns the property. The developer has some concerns that it wants to better secure the site. And it's going to lease the site from the state. And it doesn't want the fact that it's leasing the site from the state to cause some kind of taxable event when it's really just there to better secure the site. So that's why that's in there.
That's it. I call it, no good deed goes unpunished, you know?
Right.
The only way we could get in to secure the property was through a lease. And being a lease to a for-profit company might trigger a tax benefit.
Also, it should be mentioned that the $25,000 is about, right now, what the state is paying in a pilot agreement for that property. So we tried to make it equivalent to what we're currently getting in revenue so that there would be no loss in revenue on the town side.
Okay. In the TIF financing part, which is in Article 9, it's our page 176. It states in here, "Associated instruments will not have occurred within nine months following the developer identifying the town." So at the adoption of the district master plan, the creation of the TIF district, and the execution of a credit enhancing agreement, and the amount of sufficient developer's sole discretion and associated instruments have not occurred within nine months following the developer identifying the town. And what does it mean by identifying the town?
So them identifying to the town in detail and with documentary support reasonably, how the TIF will be utilized. So in the TIF district master plan, we have to identify what would the TIF money be used for. So they need to identify that information to us prior to us writing the TIF district master plan.
So as soon as they identify everything, we basically have nine, within nine months, we're supposed to come up with our master plan? Is that what that's saying?
Yes. Then we can begin working on the master plan, which we've, when we crafted our TIF policy and the other two TIF districts that we did in town, we basically created a framework, almost a template is the word I'm looking for, for those master plans. So the two master plans we have are almost identical except for the maps, the districts, and the areas, the items that the money can be used for. So creating the plan itself is not that difficult. It's actually coming up and working on what are the items and the boundaries of the district.
All right. Thank you. And then, then it goes on to say, "to be utilized in connection with the eligible project improvement and activities and developers' costs associated with such improvements and activities, and provide such detail and documentary support within 90 days following the effective date." And what is the effective date? Is it when this is signed, this document is signed?
That's correct.
So they're going to give us, they're going to ID everything within 90 days of us signing this agreement? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then section 9.02, I'm sorry. I have, it was just so much to take in, and then I just had questions. I'm sorry. Section 9.02, Town Assistance. And it goes on and again about the $25,000 regarding the lease, no more than $25,000. And then it says, "The parties agree that any such tax agreement or written assurance shall terminate upon issuance of," and this is like the last sentence, "issuance of a building permit for the first phase of developer improvements." Can you explain that exactly?
So we want to ensure that this project gets built generally as proposed and agreed by the town. And we wanted to make sure that we weren't unduly binding the developer and their financing entities. Basically, the building permit was enough of a threshold, a trigger, for us to realize that they've taken the project so far that they're committed to actually getting this done. At that point in time, we thought it was reasonable for us to release our commitment to providing limitations on the taxes. And at that point, the project should be ready to advance if they have the building permit.
So the $25,000 agreement would probably, they're saying that that will end when they're given a building permit. And when will the tax incremental financing go into play at the closing? Because the other, prior to this, I read where it said the $25,000 could go a year after the closing. So I'm not sure exactly when the TIF falls into play.
So the TIF falls into play when you decide it falls into play. So it'll be once the 25,000... So, it'll be once the, once the twenty-five thousand dollar tax agreement ends, the TIF will happen sometime after that.
So, this one here says it's going to end as soon as the building permit for the first phase of development improvements.
Mm-hmm. The, the twenty-five thousand dollars that, that lease, yeah. So, once they start doing construction, then that ends. The TIF could start sometime after that.
All right. So, so between they start construction, and that when they get that permit, the twenty-five thousand dollars will stop? Even though it said at the closing, at the closing, they have a year after that?
Because they could close on the property tomorrow.
Right. With the, with the state. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And then they have a year after that. So, then when they get a first building permit, that's when that agreement ends. And, and then we decide when the TIF will start. So, we could say, after phase one is built, we, the TIF goes into effect, and in that timeframe, there's no taxes paid. Is that correct?
No. Once they take ownership of the property, they would begin paying taxes. We don't start paying money back through the TIF or giving that reimbursement through the credit enhancement agreement until after they start paying taxes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then we set the parameters for when that starts?
Correct.
Even if they're in the, the phase of building?
Correct.
It's gonna be that first year? Okay.
The idea of having, having the tax agreement and, once we build, pull a building permit, that's essentially when we're, we're starting the project. And so, there, there's no reason to give us, um, that kind of, um, tax arrangement, you know? And it'll just be assessed as, as any project would normally after that. And so, essentially, we have, it says notwithstanding, it's one year. But if for some reason we pulled a building permit in six months, then the tax agreement would end. So, it's kind of belt and suspenders for the town. And, and the reason why I think it's tied to the building permit, that's kind of matches equally when we're supposed to pull our first building permit, um, which is in one year from the date of closing, we have to start construction.
Okay. And I think this is my last one, if you don't mind. I'm sorry. I'm on page one eighty-two, and it's Article fifteen miscellaneous, and I'm on section fifteen dash zero three.
That's where I was going.
So, then it goes on to say, and I'm on, um, I guess it's item two, "The expiration of the term of six years with the date developer receives all governmental approvals that are required from any governmental authority in order to construct the project in accordance with the agreement and the development plans." So, this is saying, "This agreement shall terminate and no longer be in full force." And how does that affect everything else that we've just discussed?
And I'm going to jump in because that was my question on that as well. What does the six years pertain to, please?
Yes.
So, the six years stated here in fifteen point oh-three, what is that, what is that saying to us?
Well, that's, that, if we don't get the project built within six years, then this agreement expires. We're no longer the, the preferred developer.
Okay.
It's probably more significant when the town is actually selling property, um, to, to the developer. In this case, it was a state's property. But we wanted to have some, all along the way, you'll note that there's all these benchmarks and timelines, and it's just to keep the developer honest and moving along.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for answering all my questions, and I'm very excited about the whole project. So, thanks.
Hopefully.
So, we have Councilor Baumgartner and Melendez.
Well, first and foremost, thank you to our town staff who have ushered us to this point, and our introductions to you, and I'm certainly welcome to Groton, and very much looking forward to your successes here. Just also quickly, you know, in times past, you know, there have been a lot of discussions about that property. And I think with this particular development agreement and concept, there were incredible sensitive, sensitivities given to, um, the environmental quality of the area and looking to enhance, you know, the, or actually create a trails network there. And so, you know, I appreciate that commitment, and I know many others in that town, in this town share those sentiments as well. Now, in particular with the TIF, you know, we approved TIF not too long ago, in kind of an overwhelming fashion, as a tool that can be deployed to incentivize development, especially mixed use developments. So, you know, originally, it was, TIF was not identified, you know, as a, as a site for the oral school, and that was largely due to the fact that we didn't have this vision yet for, for North. So, I'd love for you to kind of walk through that process and see how we got to that point. Also, kind of lay it out there that, you know, TIF is really intended for, you know, site in environmental remediation and improving utilities and, and, you know, sidewalks. And so, you, you know, essentially, the mechanisms that will actually support the development as opposed to kind of, you know, paying for the development itself. So, maybe kind of walk through that, walk that through for the public.
Sure. So, when we, the town, first envisioned and started talking about TIF, it was actually for a project, the first really proposal or push we had for was for a project up at the intersection of Route one eighty-four and one seventeen. And that project is still out there, but it's kind of slowed down in the process a little bit. But that helped us push forward. Doing tax increment financing was one of the recommendations from the market analysis that we had completed. And the two major growth areas that we were trying to look at within the town at that time to help revitalize were downtown Groton along Route one, and then looking and working with the city for Thame Street and the Five Corners area. In many instances, TIF is utilized, in fact, for, as you said, a larger redevelopment projects, project that may have brownfields associated with an environmental cleanup, need public infrastructure. So, this project, for its size and its scale, is an exact example of what TIF was created for. The two TIF districts that we have in the town, the one in the town and the other in the city, are actually a little different than how TIF is normally done because we, the town, put those TIF districts out there without any active project ready to move forward within it. We did it to help incentivize and let the development world, development community know that, hey, here's two other areas in town that we just changed the zoning on for the downtown. We want to have special tax increment financing there, as well as Thames and Five Corners. And there are other areas in town that may come up over time that really require that extra special attention, that we want to see a property redeveloped, such as this one here.
And has there been any thoughts or consideration to, you know, kind of how the, you know, the infrastructure will flow with the surrounding community, in particular, increasing connectivity with downtown Mystic?
Yes. We've talked about different opportunities and possibilities, and I think as we start moving forward in the process, those are things that will get fleshed out more. So, whether it's shuttle service between Mystic Ed Center and downtown Mystic, or other ways of getting people around town, I think there was a discussion about, you know, once the project is built and there's a parking garage, that, that may be able to be used as overflow parking for downtown Mystic during special events. So, the development project will be successful if we all work together. And I, I think we don't want to, oh, we're going to take from this area to benefit that area. It's, we, you know, a rising tide lifts all boats. So, I think in this instance, the success of this project will help areas around it also.
Thank you.
Councilor Melendez.
I just want to thank you all for meeting with the residents of the properties just around the property. Naturally, at the meeting, a lot of concerns were addressed, and I just, I think your, your, your project will be a great asset to the town, and I just hope that you guys continue to listen to and address the concerns of, of the peoples, um, living right around this property. But I, I just want to thank you for meeting and listening to their concerns.
I would echo that sentiment. I heard a lot of good things about the way your team is interacting with the residents and with the council, the outreach you've done, and so we appreciate that. And I think we're all pretty excited about the whole project. Councilor Bordelain.
Hi. Thank you again for coming to Groton and seeing potential here, and I'm excited to see where it goes. And there's other properties around if you guys are interested. Anyway, just side note. No, but I'm really excited. I just, I know this is just the first step in all of this, but I, I'm a firm believer in the environment here and protecting wildlife and tree structure, and hoping, once again, it's not addressed in this article, but down the road, I hope that, um, there's some talk about the environmental aspect. It's a great location, but looking at some of the trees and looking at how we develop and possibly, you know, maybe keeping some of the original structures. And I think it's really exciting, and I welcome you guys here, and I look forward to see where, where it will take us. So, thank you.
All right. It doesn't look like anyone else has questions. So, if we are prepared to vote on 2020-44, Mr. Education Center Development Agreement and Project Overview, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? So moved unanimously? Wonderful. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the tour today.
Yes. We enjoyed that.
We need to be a longer...
All right. So, the next, next up will be 2019-805, Installation of Solar Panels on New Schools. And we are back onto page one oh-two. And this is, Councilor Bordelain, please?
Um, I might need a minute. I just shuffled my whole file here. One second. Ah, sorry. Motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager, John Burt, to execute letter of intent to Green Bank for installation of solar, solar panels up Groton Middle School and Cutler Elementary School. I say move.
Second. Moved by Bordelain, seconded by Granatowski. Good evening again, Mr. Norris. And would you please introduce your saucer?
Sure. I am your new Public Works Director, Greg Hanover. And we have Rick Norris, our school construction manager, here.
Excellent.
You know, it's been the desire of the council, the Board of Ed, and the permanent school building committee to install solar panels on the new schools. Certainly, Public Works is the constructor. We support that goal, and we're doing everything we can to achieve that. We wanted just to have a discussion tonight to update you on where we are and where we think we should be going. The construction of the middle schools, you can see coming up the Fort Hill, is about sixty percent complete. That building will be done June thirtieth of this year. It's still on schedule. The two elementary schools, Cutler and Westside, are both out to bid now. They will be starting construction around the first of April, and they will be, excuse me, completed around June twenty-twenty-one. The actual installation of the solar panels is not part of the school construction project. There's a couple reasons for that. One is, including them would have delayed the design and construction schedule, and also the solar panels are not eligible for state grant reimbursement. We have, however, included, you know, the necessary infrastructure and made the necessary combinations as far as space for the equipment to add the solar panels once the schools are done. Recently, staff was made aware of a municipal assistance program for solar power purchase agreement with the Connecticut Green Bank. The Connecticut Green Bank is kind of a quasi-public agency that offers what the town, offers to the town what the staff feels is a, is a, is a good viable option for installing solar panels. Rick has been working with the Green Bank and knows the program better than I, so I'm going to turn it over to him to kind of go into the details.
Yeah. Yeah. We certainly appreciate all the support we've, we received from the community on the solar panels. That was something that was on everybody's mind from the very beginning of the projects. You know, as, as we went through the development of the projects, the budget didn't allow that because when we do projects like that, we should include some set aside for renewable energy, which we haven't in the past. But that would be very helpful because if you try and take it out of the budget and you don't have it, then it affects the rest of the educational, uh, aspects of the building or other, other aspects of the building that you would like to, to make a little better, if you will. We, you know, having looked at that, as Greg alluded to, we didn't have the budget initially. The state wasn't allowing that. In fact, they still don't allow reimbursement for solar panels. To add them afterwards, even if, even if the bids come in low, it would be a change order, and again, not reimbursable if the state should allow that. So, so we kind of had our hands tied. We had, had the Green Bank on our radar earlier on. I received some information about this municipal assistance program, um, which is, is very helpful to us. The Green Bank had been downsized a little bit from their state funding. A couple of years ago, it was, it was cut like in half. So, they've looked at some other projects that, that are being eliminated, but they've also looked at the need for the various communities because they, they wouldn't loan to communities for those kind of installations, but they would help through this MAP program to get those installed because they identified the community needed to do that. So, what it really amounts to is, they would do the design. Initially, they'd done a sort of desktop review of the buildings. Now, this applies only to, to Cutler and the new middle school. And I'll explain the reason why it doesn't apply to Westside now. But it, it looked like the best viable option for us to receive it. Because what they'll do is, they'll do the design. After we get to this letter of intent, they'll, and that sign, they'll take that information with, with kind of rough conceptual design, go to an auction for the LREC-ZREC program, which are the renewable energy credits, which they would sell and obtain the funding for helping the third party finance the operation. They would also then, we would get, uh, a power purchase agreement would need to be ultimately signed with the Board of Education because they'd be the power off-takers and basically in control of the buildings at that time. But as, looking at the design and the requirements that are needed and the infrastructure that's, that's being installed, we thought it was best to, for Public Works to continue on through that process until we get to the, until we get to the building turnover. The solar MAP letter of intent is, is not a binding agreement. It does give the, the Green, Green Bank and their other parties like three hundred and sixty days to do the negotiations. So, we would sign this letter, they would go to this auction for the LREC-ZRECs. There's three groups of that, if you will. We're, we're in the lowest, or the smallest category, which is really an open auction. But the Green Bank thinks we would be successful in that. There's always the possibility that we would not be, and that we'd have to put this off a year. So, that's basically what the agreement is. It's non-binding. It allows them to look at the financing, similar to what we did at the landfill, where we had a, like, uh, option to lease, that some of you may recall, for that company, which, and that didn't come forwards, that option to lease expired and was not renewed. But it's a similar type of thing. And then they would do, like I said, due to design, at no cost to the town, they would bid the projects out to a number of pre-qualified bidders that they have. They would do the installation, and then also the maintenance and, uh, operation thereafter, which is, which is good for both us and the Board of Education because neither, neither the town or the Board of Education are, uh, do energy generation as a core function kind of thing. So, we really need somebody outside to do that work for us. So, having said that, this, this could be an initial foray, if you will, into the solar panel business because they're interested in other buildings. You know, we'll have a look at the high school. Right now, it's only those that are in the ever-source area that we could really use this process for. So, what would be the proposal is to get through this first program, the, like I said, June would be the auction date. They do the design afterwards, and potentially in the spring of twenty-twenty-one, they could do the panel installation. So, we may put that off to the summer based on the school buildings being finished. The, the middle school would then be a year without panels, but that second summer that it's finished, the panels could be installed, and then we would be, be there. Questions about energy and use? You know, we additionally, initially did some back of the envelope, had the architects help us, found out it was, you know, way beyond our capability actually to do, but it looked like it was somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent. Now that we have the, the Green Bank on, they may be able to look at additional roof areas on those buildings, and, and maybe it increases to twenty-five percent or thirty percent of the energy use. So, so to get this project done would be good, and then we could identify a couple of follow-ons for the following year, and they would be willing to help us with that. So, so I think this is a, is a good move for the town. There's no money upfront. The only... for the town. There's no money upfront. The only cash outlay would be the Board of Education purchasing the utilities or electricity from the panels and from this operator. So, it looks almost like a winning situation for us as far as doing that installation.
Great, thank you. I assume I knew you were going to ask a question. Council Bumgardner.
Thank you for coming tonight to present this to us. I know we've talked a lot about rooftop solar. There will be a plethora of new parking lots constructed. Was there any consideration to potentially building?
I, I've looked at those. In fact, the high school, I went to my reunion, they actually had a parking lot roof. It was in California. The issue we have in Connecticut is we only have an average of three or four hours of, of sunlight a day. So, the efficiency on solar panels is, is really a lot less. So, what would have to be looked at is if you looked at those type of installations, we'd have to look at how we would install them and how we would handle snow removal and other, other things. I'm not saying it's impossible to do, but it's not the first thing on our priority list, but it certainly deserves some consideration.
And there was a note in the packet regarding Groton Utilities not allowing third-party generators. Is the reason for solar panels?
Um, yes, I started communications with Groton Utilities because actually you see the solar panels that belong, that are used for the sub-bays. Actually, they're camed by CMEC and a, a third party. So, we'd have to figure out how, and like I said, I started those discussions, so I need to press them on how we can do that, particularly on municipal buildings, because it serves them as well as us on how we can attach solar to the buildings under this type of regime. It may mean we need to go to CMEC, see if they're willing to, to buy the power because they only have a certain amount of solar they allow based on their agreements with, with the Groton Utilities. So, that, that research is being done, and hopefully I can come up with something that will bear fruit for us.
Well, if there's a will, there's a way, and you know, many of us were, I think we're all elected and certainly, you know, the city of Groton, they're elected too, and you know, we meet four times a month, and I think, you know, this is something of priority for...
Well, because if we can figure out the schools, we've got library, we've got other buildings that are in the Groton Utility area that we could benefit by putting solar panels on. So, so it's, it's a bigger issue, if you will, not necessarily a problem, but an issue to address than just the, just the one school.
Council Parker.
All right, I have a few questions. On page 102, all right, they would work, they would work with the utilities as excess power would feed back to the grid. If it feeds back to the grid, there's no additional cost to what it's doing?
No, the grid, yes, Groton Utilities, not Groton Utilities, but Eversource would buy back power that's not being used, is the way that agreements typically use, or typically go. So, any additional power that's to the grid that's not being used by the building, I mean, would put, be put back on the grid, the utility would typically buy that power at, at some cost, but it's generally pretty low.
Right, next question. The roof warranty, are they going to?
Roof warranties, we're looking into to find out exactly whether it's a ballasted system or whether it penetrates the roof. Fortunately, on the elementary school, we're at a stage where we can look at that a little more closely, where we could actually attach to the roof structure. On the middle school, we may be required to do something different or some combination of a ballast system and a adhered system to those things. That, that won't be determined until we get into what their design is and how we do that.
Okay, my other question is, you guys have checked with the state. I'm not asking about the reimbursement part of it, because technically you are changing the plans of the building when you add something to it.
Oh, we'll work with the state on that. I mean, we've talked to them before. They're aware of what we want to do.
I want to make sure there's a letter or something that is forwarded to us so that we know that the state's okay with this being added to and changed. I, I just...
I mean, in reality, if it's not part of the project, the state really has no play in it, but I'll, I'll verify that.
But we're getting reimbursement for a building that's not, did not require, did not have solar panels.
That, well, if, for example, you have a school that we built over here, a high school, we can, we can put solar panels on it now. We got a grant to build it from the state, right? So, we're not required to tell the state we're putting solar panels on that once the project's completed. But I'll, I'll certainly check into it and make sure. Because not being part of the project, it's, it has different requirements.
Yes, but we're getting reimbursement for the school as we're building it because they had to approve the plans of the school before we built it, correct?
Yeah.
All right, so we are changing it, so are we waiting until after this?
The building will be substantially completed and that will be reported to the state. So, the building will be completed. So, at that point, we don't owe the state anything, but I will, I will certainly check into it.
And the middle school, we were told, was designed and being built to accommodate solar panels.
Right.
So, it's Cutler that you're talking about, which is...
Well, there is some infrastructure. There's some conduits, there's some conduits running into the electrical room. We have a benefit over the, at the elementary school that I was able to pass that information that shows that because we are in construction or will be in construction to, so they could modify that. You know, the Green Bank could tell us, or actually CSW Energy is, the group is doing the, the engineering work, would tell us if that's sufficient or whether we need to modify something. So, we do, we're a little better, I think, at the elementary school than we are at the middle school. Because the middle school, we may have to do some rework, add some additional conduits, particularly if they want to use more roof area.
But I, what I understood was the middle school was being built to accommodate future installation, that it was designed to have everything in place so that you could pop the panels on.
To, to a certain extent. We didn't have a project. We don't know all the solar panels that could be installed. So, originally, the middle school, we had looked at from the very beginning as, as sort of a demonstration project, if you will, on the three slanted roof sections for the cafeteria, and not beyond that. But there is a conduit there that will, will supply or will work with a couple of other sections of the building. But until we get a final design and where they're actually going to install all the panels, we don't know exactly if we have everything they need.
So, so then are you saying that the three sections over the cafeteria are prepped and ready to accept panels, but the other parts of the building are not?
Yes, yes. We were told, we were told the, by the architect, and this will be confirmed by CSW, that the roof structure, which I provided structural drawings to this group on both schools, will support ballasted panels. Whether that's the best way to attach them or not, we don't know. That'll be part of the design and we'll have to have that discussion with the engineering firm. I mean, so we don't have a lot of answers, and I'm sorry we don't have those answers yet, but we don't have, really have a design, so I really can't give you...
Right.
Kilowatt-hours figures, those sorts of things until we get a better design thing.
Okay, so, all right, I'll wait my turn. So, Council Zepary was next.
I understand from reading the contract that Green Bank will own the equipment, will install it, maintain it, and own it.
Yes.
And Green Bank will own 100% of the power that's produced by it. Is that correct?
And, and they would sell, they expect the school to buy 100% of that power. Now, whether that works or not, that's what I'm saying, that's part of that agreement that will become part of the power purchase agreement.
Okay, now, the power, the power that's generated, how will the price for that power compare with the price we're paying?
I, we don't know that yet either. It should be less. Obviously, we won't have to pay distribution charges, which are, are more than half of our, our energy bill right now. So, as a minimum, the energy...
Okay, we were enthusiastic about doing this because we wanted to do our share to reduce carbon emissions into the atmosphere.
Right.
From fossil fuels. But I'm also wondering, is there any other return to the town for having these solar panels on the roofs of our schools?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I could certainly continue to look into that because things pop up every day just about on something.
Just so long as it's out in the open.
Right.
That this is our, our interest in this has been to, as I said, do our part to reduce carbon emissions.
Right. And it's, and it's a good, it's a good educational component for the kids in the schools. And we have talked to the superintendent about putting some programs together for that. So, it has some other uses, really, if you will.
Are there other options for us to look into that would put solar panels up on the, on the roofs of the school and then, and return, and return something of economic value to the town?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, other than this type of thing where it costs us virtually nothing to put them up there. And it, and it saves us electrical costs.
Okay, but we really don't know what the savings will be.
Not, not precisely. We know the distrib, I know what the distribution cost is for electricity in the Eversource area, and it's about eight cents a kilowatt hour. We're paying just over eight cents a kilowatt hour for electricity also. So, we, we will at least save half of that, and I suspect the electricity would be maybe a couple of cents cheaper on the solar panels. But that all has to be negotiated as part of the power purchase agreement, which then the school board would, you know, obviously should be paying the electric bills.
Okay, we have quite a few people that wish to speak. We have Franco, Boardlon, Heed, Granatowski, Bumgardner. Council Franco.
So, I have solar panels at my house, and I got them under a grant from the city of Connecticut where they also installed them. They pulled the permits, they installed them, they maintain them, they own them. Same, sounds very similar.
Very similar, except it's not a grant program, if you will. It's really assist the communities and, and, and that sort of thing. So...
Right.
Instead of getting a grant, they, they, being the Green Bank, pay for the design, they pay, they do the, all the legwork for us.
Right. I had zero out of my pocket as well. They designed it, they ran all the wires, they did everything that was necessary to do.
Yeah, it's very similar.
And in my house, I saved about 40% of my bill. So, I was extremely happy, and I just pay a flat rate every single month.
Right.
And it doesn't go up or down, it's a flat rate. And I bank some, I bank everything I generate and then subtract what I used that month.
Right.
And I usually carry money in my bank until the end of the year. Or sometimes, at the end of the year, I run lower and I had to pay for excess. Do we have to buy back? If we use up all of our bank, do we have to?
For, for example, since it only provides 20, 30, whatever the percentage happens to be, which I don't have a real number until we get a design, we will still be buying some power from Eversource to make up the difference.
Right, so this isn't, just so that people understand, this is not a, you know...
It doesn't, it doesn't supply all the power for the building, it supplies part of the power for the building.
Right. So, um, so I wanted to make sure, I know one other positive I was told is that if they're on my roof, I mean, I don't know how they're going to be set up on a flat roof. These are basically flat roofs, I'm not sure how they're set up. Mine is low to the roof, and they said it would actually save my roof and probably I'd get an extra 10 years out of my roof because it helps shield the roof from the elements. Is that in the case of the flat roof?
I don't know that for a fact, but we'll look into that too as we go through.
But are they going to be standing on poles and then, or will they be low?
We don't know the installation yet until we get to the design.
Oh, okay. They didn't explain to you whether, because it's a flat roof, how they usually do those?
So, some, it could be a ballasted system where they're on ballast, they have concrete blocks, they put them on, they put a structure up. They have to be at a little bit lower angle than you may be on a house or, or another flat roof because we are in the high wind area.
Right.
So, so the elevation may not be quite the same as what you see. And it could be any number. I mean, they could penetrate the roofs in some areas to put a couple of structures at the end, put a long rack in. It could be, could be mounted by a ballasted system where they do a similar thing with concrete blocks and stuff, which is more, I guess, could be more deleterious to the roof. We're doing those studies now, so we need to see what their design is before.
All right, I have two questions left. So, you put the solar on the roof, and would that void the roof warranty that we have?
Not that we're aware of right now. We've, we've had some of that checking, we have talked with them, and their experience with the roof warranty being voided is not. So, we're still working out those details. And of course, if it does, then we're probably not going to do things the way they may want to do it, may have to choose a different method. But that, that'll all be part of the discussion as we go through the planning exercise.
Yeah, I think these roof manufacturers now, they see this more and more, so they're getting accustomed to, you know, dealing with these panels.
Yeah, I would assume so, but I just want to make sure.
That was one of my first questions as well when I started talking with you about this.
Yeah, let's make sure of that one. And then, what would happen if the roof needed repairs? Because we have heard over and over again, flat roofs have issues more so than others. And if there is a repair needed and, like, and, and solar panels have to be removed or...
Well, we'll have to have them remove them. I mean, the roofs we're putting on the schools now will have a 30-year warranty. The roofs, although we call them flat, are flat, but they're not level.
They're pitched a bit, right.
They're pitched a bit, so, for drainage because that's a requirement by the state. So, that's, that's a detail I'll have to work out through the agreement with them. But that's a good point, I'll make sure I make note of it.
Yeah, let's just, yeah, figure out who's responsible for what and how it's all going to happen, we could. All right, thank you very much.
I'm just going to jump in for a quick second just to clarify something. What we're voting on tonight is a letter of intent. This is not the final deal, if you will. The letter of intent allows the manager and the town to go and sit down and discuss with Connecticut Green Bank what exactly the parameters would be, what the specifics would be at that time. That would have to come back to us for approval, correct? All right, so all of these things that you're asking now, I'm sure the manager and Mr. Hanover are considering and will be asking those questions when they go to sit with the Green Bank. So, we will get another shot at this when we have more details. Council Boardlon, Heed?
Well, to your point, Madam Mayor, the actual agreement, the power purchase agreement will be signed with the Board of Education, not with the council. So, maybe that discussion needs to occur between you folks. I can certainly come back and report on the status and where they stand. And I have provided to them for their attorney to, to review that power purchase agreement until we have a design. Some of the information is still missing, but we'll be, you know, we can certainly report back on, on where we are with the process and where we need to go. But yes, you're exactly right. This allows the, the Green Bank to go out and look at the financing, look at the LREC-ZREC auction, do things for us, start some design work, and, and give us at least the conceptual design and the full design would probably be done after, and certainly the bidding would be done after a power purchase agreement is signed with the Board of Education.
And gives the town or the Board of Education the chance to say no if they don't deem it as favorable. So, this is a preliminary step.
Yeah, they can.
Councilor Boardlon?
Thank you. I think it's great. I think we're, we've been behind the curve on this for quite some time, looking at the senior center, looking at this building, looking at multiple buildings that we've had go up in the town. I don't know if this is the best plan, and I, I do think that we should be, while we're working on this, maybe continuing to research other options that may be out there to see what other assets the town can get. Since we don't, you know, we still don't know what the cost, the benefit, basically we're like housing a, a source for somebody, and that's what it sounds like as of right now. So, that's great because it's reducing it somewhere. So, I, I guess, I would, I would like to see more research done. I think this is a great, you know, starting point, but I think looking forward, I think I'd like to see some more discussions with, you know, the buildings that fall in the other section, like Westside and Catherine Colnowski, looking at ways to implement some type of, you know, resource as well. But I do think it, like, we should come back to the table on this and maybe a joint discussion with the Board of Education so that we are kind of on the same page. I mean, because once again, the town builds the buildings and they hand them over to the Board of Ed, and then the Board of Ed, when they're done with them, has to come back to the town. So, it's important because the CIPs and the, and the maintenance that are done of these buildings come back to this body typically.
Right.
So, looking at that and the warranties and that it's not really our asset on the top of our brand-new building, I would, I would really encourage that the contract looks, that the protection is there. So, once again, this is, I know, just a starting point, but I, I hope that it does come back to us before it goes to Board of Ed and then, and/or collaboration. But I would like to see more discussion in general, not after the fact, but like kind of getting ahead of the curve and actually negotiating and planning things to be a part of our infrastructure as part of the building. So, but I, I think there's more options out there. I don't know what they are, but I, I don't know if this is the best one.
No, I can tell you, we've researched many options over the past 10, 15 years. We looked at landfills, we looked at buildings. We had people come in and look at the town buildings already here. And the issue we have with some of our buildings is we had to put these large screening things on there to screen rooftop equipment so there was no room on the roof, if you will. So, all of those buildings, we have actually done significant research into those areas. This, this is the one that looks like it's, it's the best bang for the buck for the town at this point. So, that's, that's all I can tell you. And we certainly come back and tell you before we get it, I mean, when we get a design... tell you before we get it, I mean, when we get a design, we can come back and talk about the design, show you where that is, if you want the Board of Ed at that point, like you said, I've had discussions with Superintendent, they're on board with this, and in fact, they have more, uh, facilities actually in the EverSource area than we do, so for me, it would be important that we could resolve the issues in the Groton Utilities area, because many of our buildings are in there, the library, the senior center, the town hall, the, you know, it just goes on and on of our facilities, which don't happen to be on this, this side of the dividing line.
So we have other counselors?
Can I just finish, because he jumped in before, what is the plan then to negotiate? Like, what, what are you, you're saying all this, it's been fifteen years, what's the plan then?
The plan, what we're, what we're discussing tonight is...
Other buildings though?
That's not on...
This is the start.
I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in here, okay?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So, we have a resolution in front of us to enter into a letter of intent, it is not a permanent agreement, it is something that allows the town to go and negotiate with this other organization. As far as what's been done in the past, we could argue about that for a long time, back and forth, um, but I prefer we not go there tonight, we still have other counselors that want to ask questions.
With all due respect, number two states that we have the option to reject this, because it says here...
Counselor Bordelon?
Well, I'd like to just read the other option.
We're aware of the other options, but we also have other counselors that haven't spoken yet, thank you.
I was still talking.
Counselor Heed, and then Bumgardner.
Can we take a break? Maybe we should take a break.
We already took a break.
Actually, my questions were answered, so.
You're good?
Thank you.
Counselor Bumgardner.
And so, I will eliminate one of my questions, because it was kind of in line with what Counselor Bordelon was referring to, but I think in the long term, it is a very important conversation to have, and so I, I hope that, um, we, maybe in a future, in a near-future meeting, we can talk about perhaps expanding to, you know, other, other town properties, and identifying if, you know, if maybe previous studies are outdated, but that's here, there, nor there, um, in terms of the, um, Green, uh, Green Bank, um, let, uh, letter of, of understanding, or, um, what, what is the timeline to execute such a...
We, we need to do this soon, because we want to get, uh, once they go to the, the auction, if you will, here, they start wanting to go out to bid, because they have their finances in place, so we really need to get this, this moving along if we want to get the, the panels on the schools in a timely manner, so having said that, if we could get approval tonight on the letter of intent, or at the next council meeting, that would be great, because then we could get them to move forward, have additional information, that we could maybe answer some more of your questions. I mean, this is a non-binding agreement, we can back out of it at any time, so if something better drops out of the sky to Counselor Bordelon's point, we could, we could do that, but right now, I think this is our best option, and we ought to give it an opportunity.
So, um, I reached out to, um, a member of the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, um, Jesse Stratton, because she is more expert in this field than I, and I asked her to look over, um, the PPA and the information here, and I don't want to, I'm just going to paraphrase, um, the first thing she started with was, this doesn't obligate us to enter into the PPA if once we get it back, um, we don't find it favorable, um, and, you know, she went on, she said some of the disadvantages that Counselors Perry mentioned, um, and Counselor Bordelon mentioned, but, um, the conclusion was pretty much that the final decision will have to be made after we see the PPA, so the only way to get to see the PPA is to sign the letter of intent, have them work it up, bring it back to us, and then at that point, if we deem it not in our best interest, we can reject it and then pursue other things, but, um, you know, with, I feel like this is a, now, this is me speaking, not, not Jesse speaking, um, I think this is a good opportunity for us to get into the renewables, and with little, little investment from the taxpayers, and we had spoken previously about this, that this was something that the majority of us wanted to do, was to start moving towards renewables, and so I am totally in favor of moving ahead with this. Uh, does anybody else who hasn't spoken yet want in? Counselor Oberg?
I'll just second what you just said, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, we don't need to make this just to sign this, so more information can be drawn, then we can look towards what do we want to do with other buildings, or what do we want to do to plan for ahead, but right now, we just need to start the process.
Uh, we haven't heard from Counselor Melendez, I don't believe, no? Okay, so everyone has spoken at least once, we're going back on people speaking more than once now, so Counselor Bumgardner has his hand up again.
There is a motion on the floor, correct?
There is a motion on the floor.
Yeah, and, and before I, um, ask for an amendment, I just would like to throw the idea out there to the council, um, in our packet, there's alternatives, so number one, authorize the town manager to execute a letter of intent to the Green Bank for installation of solar panels on Groton Middle School and Cutler Elementary School, it seems like that's what is in the motion.
That is the motion that's on the floor.
Um, and then there's also direct, the Director of Public Works to continue discussions with the Green Bank and other solar providers for installation of solar panels on Groton Middle School and Cutler Elementary School, and to explore the options for installation of solar panels on West Side Elementary, uh, elementary and other schools, and so, if I could, I would add to the current motion, and to explore the options for installation of solar panels on West Side and Elementary School, and in other schools, as, you know, I will be supporting the, um, you know, the manager to authorize a letter of intent.
Are you making an amendment, sir?
Yes.
Could you please read it?
Uh, so I will make an amendment, so that the motion states, uh, well, the draft motion states to recommend a resolution authorizing town manager John Burt to execute a letter of intent to Green Bank for installation of solar panels on Groton Middle School and Cutler Elementary School, uh, and to explore the options for installations, I am, I'm sorry, uh, to explore the options for installation of solar panels on West Side Elementary School and other schools.
And I will second that. So there's an amendment on the floor by Bumgardner to add a line to the existing motion, and Granatoski seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? To meet why I, I will give Counselor Bumgardner the first chance to speak on it, since it's your amendment, did you want to say, speak anymore? I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to speak on it anymore?
Um, no, I think I've spoken enough.
I will speak since I seconded, uh, I think that's a good, um, it gets, gets us moving forward on the letter of intent, but it also allows us to pursue something with Groton Utilities, and perhaps if we need to go to CMEC, we go to CMEC, but I really think we need to move ahead with the letter of intent, so I, I would support this amendment, obviously, since I seconded it. Anyone else? Counselor Bordelon?
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Counselor Bumgardner, that's kind of the direction I was going, when I was speaking about the other schools and moving forward, and where we, we are, I was also speaking not just to the motion that was put out, but also number two, that was stating, continue research, so there was other options to continue pushing forward, but I think that amendment, that amendment that Counselor Bumgardner put forward, I think, keeps us moving in that direction, so I, I think it's really important that we look at all of our, our building and real estate in the town, and not stop here, and I, I, once again, I will, I will go forward with this to, to basically see what they bring forward, but I think there's probably better options, so.
Counselor Franco, and then Heed.
I'd like to clarify what, what I had heard from tonight, so what we're doing is signing the letter of intent, uh, Mr. Burt signs it, it goes forward, they design all these things, and come back, and they give a presentation, but would they be giving it to the Board of Ed, or would they be giving it to us? Because who's signing off on solar panels going on?
As soon as we have some of the questions answered, I would have staff come back before presenting anywhere else.
And, and we can certainly bring the engineering firm with us to do that, you know, maybe it's a joint meeting, maybe it's not, but we could work that as, as we go, as we go along, because ultimately, the Board of Ed's going to be the, the off-taker of the power, if you will, so they would need to sign the power purchase agreement, but that doesn't mean that they need to put it all together either.
Right, so if we say okay to this, and what if they say no?
Who, the Board of Ed?
Could the Board of Ed say no?
The Superintendent, I've already discussed this, the line with the Superintendent, and he's all for this.
I'm just wondering how the process works, and, and is it coming back to us? Do we, we don't have the final say, so we approve it, and then it goes to them, they would have their meeting, and then they would prove it, is that how it's working?
I mean, technically, once the buildings are theirs, they could go forward with or without us, however, as soon as we have the information, they'll come back and present.
All right, thank you.
And, and part of, part of the rationale to go forward in this direction is to get the Board of Ed to do their own work, I mean, if we can get them to identify projects, then the, then the Board of, Board of Ed will take the lead on their other schools, for example, and we at Public Works will work on the town buildings, so, um, based on the process, the way it's laid out, I'm sure they could, they could do that after we get through the first foray, if you will, into this exercising.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so, um, trying to think, if we can just move, Mr. Burt, parliamentary procedure question, do we need to vote the amendment, or can we just vote the amendment? Because we're not substantial, well, we're changing it, but we're adding to it.
Well, we've had this discussion before, where we don't always follow the normal procedure, you know, technically, my understanding is you should vote on the amendment first, and then the full thing, however, Betsy often has it, as you do it, is one.
I know, I know. All right, let's vote the amendment, so, um, all those in favor of the amendment, which is simply adding the line, and to explore the options for installation of solar panels on West Side Elementary and other schools, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstention, so eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Parker, so the amendment passes, so now we're going to vote on the full thing, and I'll read it to you, the motion is to recommend a resolution authorizing town manager John Burt to execute a letter of intent to Green Bank for installation of solar panels on Groton Middle School and Cutler Elementary School, and to explore the options for installation of solar panels on West Side Elementary and other schools. I assume, well, it's already moved. It's, we're already, we're already done, I was just reading.
It's late.
It is late, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Parker, so that passes as amended.
Thank you very much.
Good step forward, good step forward. Okay, we are on to five D, 2020-41 short-term rental discussion, this is page one oh seven, um, there is no motion, and I just wanted to talk about, um, what the goal was with this item, we have invited several people here tonight to talk with us about this, and, um, the, the recommended action is that the town council will give staff feedback. I don't think we're ready to give feedback tonight, so what I intended to have done is, the people that were invited to come here this evening, um, if, if they would come up to the table, please, uh, the short-term rental people, so Mr. Dunn, Mr. Bradham, Mr. Davis, Mr. Scherz is here? No? Okay, uh, Mr. Crouch from Groton Long Point emailed, he is, his daughter is in labor, so he can't be with us this evening, so he sends his regrets, um, but what I wanted to do tonight was to give everybody a chance to give us a very brief, what are you doing in your part of town, we'll let, we'll let Mr. Reiner start, and then each of you could kind of tell us very quickly, a couple minutes, what you've done in your part of town, we can listen, um, and then what, I was hoping, and I think we've talked before about creating maybe a working group, where this is going to be a long process, where we'll hear a little bit tonight, the goal is so that you're not duplicating what they already did and what they already found out, so if everybody kind of shares tonight, we can all kind of hear what's going on in town, gives us the first step to see what everybody's up to. Uh, you should know that Mayor Hedrick has called a meeting that I'll be attending next week with Mayor Passerone, some other municipal leaders on this very issue, so then I can take whatever we're doing here, whatever I heard here, and pass that along to the other municipal leaders, then maybe one or two counselors could meet over a series of months with whoever is willing to come to these meetings, and we could continue working, this is not a short process, this is nothing that's going to be decided this evening, all right, so pretty much, I just wanted us to listen, to see what was going on, and give you the chance to talk to us about what you've done, so, Mr. Reiner, did you want to start with just a, do you have something you want to talk to us about?
John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services, so, uh, myself and the town attorney have been looking at this issue a little bit over the course of the past couple of months, doing some research, I've had help from, uh, folks such as Larry, talking with people in the city of Groton, um, as well as other colleagues around the region, on things that have worked, and how things have started, and then stopped in many instances, and I, I think, big picture that we really want to think about as we're addressing any new ordinance or regulation is, what is the goal, what is it that we're trying to regulate, what will the impacts of that be, and then what will the costs be to the town financially, to the taxpayers and town government, but also to the character, the sense of place in the neighborhood, so I think, really thinking about framing the question, and thinking about why we're moving forward on this, I also think it's very important that we don't just craft an ordinance and start moving forward, but instead get feedback that, um, the council and the body that would be actually enacting and adopting this ordinance hear that feedback, even before we start crafting an ordinance, so we don't start moving forward in one direction and then want to go in a different direction. There was really nice, um, one of the presentations that Larry had actually gotten for me, had kind of eleven questions on it from a PowerPoint, and those were things to really start considering and framing that, you know, what are the most important goals as it relates to short-term rentals, so for me, if I could ask anything of you, just keep that context in mind as we're going through this whole process, what are the major goals, so, that's all I really wanted to address today.
Thank you, so if, if you gentlemen, it happens to be all gentlemen here this evening, if you could just introduce yourself, tell us what part of town you're from, and then briefly, um, what issue you're seeing, and what you all have done, and then what are your obstacles, and then if you just pass it along, and each of you could kind of give us briefly what's, what's going on, so I don't know where you want to start, we need you to use the mic though, so that can be picked up, so, who wants to start?
My name is Mark Scher, I live at eleven Allen Street in Mystic, uh, I was here probably about three months ago or so, um, and I stood up here and explained to you that, um, the homes that surround me directly, um, are almost all turning into VRBOs, or short-term rentals, and it was pretty alarming how quickly this is happening, and how it is changing the, kind of the fabric of the neighborhood, and, uh, in the few months since then, um, I kind of wanted to get feedback from everybody, and I went to a meeting over in Noack, just to kind of listen to, see what they were doing, uh, I went down to Groton City to kind of hear what they were doing, um, and what I've come up with is that no one knows what to do, um, which, you know, we all have our opinions, um, I think my opinion, whether it's right or wrong, is that at the very least, this needs to be regulated, um, uh, by the town somehow, um, I don't have the details on that, on how to go about that, to be totally honest with you, um, but to have businesses running in neighborhoods, um, like this, definitely can cause tension, um, it can cause, uh, you know, who knows what can happen, um, there've been some pretty bad instances out in California, um, with short-term rentals, people partying, I haven't had really too many bad incidences around me, to be honest with you, so that I've been lucky with, but I will say, um, my feeling is this summer coming up, um, living in Mystic, living walkable to downtown, um, that something very well could happen, and, um, and, you know, with parking, with, you know, parking issues, and, um, party houses and things like that, you just don't know, and it's, it's unnerving, um, when you look at your window and you see a, a different car there every single weekend, um, and you don't know who they are, and, and it's just, it's, it's very unnerving, um, it's nice to know who your neighbors are, um, it's nice to have neighbors that you, you know, you know by first name, you don't necessarily have to be best friends with them, but, um, you, this is totally changing the fabric of the neighborhood, and I'm hoping that, um, you know, we all can come to a, a, a good conclusion without yelling and screaming at each other, and we can, we can figure this out, because I believe that we can figure this out, um, you know, if we put our heads together, but I, I will say that, I know you said this isn't going to happen tonight, we're not going to decide anything, I will say there is somewhat of a, you know, you do want something to happen sooner than later, because I, I do believe homes are being bought, and businesses are starting to be run, um, and this is something that, uh, you know, definitely could, could change pretty quickly, so, um, that's kind of my opinion, and I'm certainly want to hear what the counselors have to say, I think this may be, be affecting some of you people as well, um, so, um, that's what I'd say.
Thank you, Mr. Scher, who is going next, Mr. Davis?
Hi, my name's John Davis, and I live one ninety-eight Shore Avenue in the city section of Groton, um, thank you for Mayor G, and really everybody, for entertaining some, uh, detailed discussion about this, not just tonight, but, you know, moving forward. To Mr. Reiner's question, that's really fair, it's good to put it to us like that, I would have to say, you know, it's like, okay, I would say, my, kind of the one goal would be, that, uh, my wish would be that all of Groton addressed this, not ignore... would be, that my wish would be that all of Groton addressed this, not ignore it, but address it. It may not turn out how I like, and, you know, I think I've told you before where I stand, kind of crazy about these businesses and residential districts, but even if it goes against my preference, I would just, I would be really pleased to have it addressed and resolved, one way or another. I think it would benefit all of Groton to decide where it, if you will, stands on this Just a couple of points, the history is, you know, I started working on this maybe last summer, but really, October, November, went to the city council, 25 signatures, you know, kind of the clock started ticking, got referred to a working group, and so on and so forth. I would have to say, and having done it, I just went out once, got 25 signatures, I would estimate, we could probably, for just as a further indication, get, I don't know, 25 to 75 more signatures than, let's say, the greater Eastern Point neighborhood. That's my guesstimate of maybe the sentiment that we're trying to represent. I'm glad to say that all different parts of Groton are working on this. NOANC has been working on it for quite some time, I think Long Point is trying to decide if it's an issue for them, and certainly, the city and the town, we've been actively discussing it. Not to be alarmist, but, and I don't know who, if you said, if Mark said it first, but just in this thing, I handed out tonight, and I talked about, I tried to be a little, you know, a little scary about this company, you know, this one company, because I think some people think this is just like grouchy neighbors, and, oh, it's all being overstated and dramatized. I really don't think that's the case at all. Just as an example, these things move so fast, as someone else said, perhaps yourself, that I mentioned this, there's this one company in Ridgefield, Connecticut, I don't know their name, but we could certainly get it, they're now in the business of buying properties and doing this, so it's not a family that's done this for years, we're talking about a business, a company. So, I wrote down on the thing you have, oh, you know, they have seven locations, and they're just in Mystic, or they've embedded in Mystic. So, I get corrected, now it's nine, and they're in Stoning at two, they're on both sides of the river. So, the point is, not to be overly dramatic, but this trend is moving very fast, and we think it matters because we think neighborhoods are starting to be converted while we work on all this other stuff like has been talked about tonight. I think it needs addressing. To wrap up my part, I'm kind of encouraged by what's been done in Hartford, you know, that's a pretty complicated place, so to speak, and in their, if I'm not mistaken, in their zoning regulations, they actually have addressed short-term rentals. I think the kind of the trend now is, oh, no, let's not do zoning, let's do it in ordinance. But they've actually addressed it in their zoning regulations, they're in place, I think it's been maybe a couple of years. And interestingly, the, if I may say, the mayor's wife is a professor of basically a property law at UConn, not a lecturer, a professor, it's her full-time business, and she actually was the one that authored the Hartford zoning regulations that addressed it. I don't know the particulars today, but they're addressing it, they haven't been taken to the Supreme Court, and she, I mean, I've been in contact with her. If Groton were to want to talk to her, let's say, sort of as a neutral party, she would, I think, be glad to be a resource, you know, on some basis. And then, finally, if you haven't heard it many times before, there's many things that many communities around this country are doing to regulate or address this issue, they're there at the bottom of number five, but there's many ways that different communities choose to address this, if they're going to allow it, how to regulate it, manage it, that's fair for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Dunn or Mr. Bradham? Do you want to go next?
I guess we'll go in this order.
Okay.
All right, Larry Dunn, 91 Crosswinds, full disclosure, I'm also an alternate on the NOANC zoning board, however, I am not here representing the NOANC zoning board, so I want to be real clear on that. I will reflect some of the history, which is public information, but not any of the deliberations, even though it's in public. First of all, is that I want to kind of reinforce that the STR situation in Groton, over from 2018, 2019, to 38%, there's now about 191 units, 85% of those units are whole-house units, so, versus the, oh, I'm just renting out in one room, most of it is going that way. We're just starting to see complaints about noise, parking, more in terms of characters in the neighborhood are changing, especially in the village, if we're talking about NOANC. And I think, given what we've seen around the country, this trend is going to continue and monetization of this short-term rental, you know, sub, you know, day turnover is going to just continue and raise, and I guess the question is, when corporations or investors buy up houses, as the evidence we've just seen, you know, as a sole purpose for renting or using the short-term rental, is that a proper residential use? Right? Because this is happening in residentially zoned areas. Now, from a business point of view, the state of Connecticut recognizes short-term rental as a business, and they instituted, I think it was middle, late last year, a 15% tax on short-term rental revenue. So, they've taken the position that, you know, that it is, in fact, a business. When you get to the other aspects, and there's, there is a lot of confusion on this, so it doesn't take some, and there's no simple answers, it'll take a lot of work, and every area of the country is different, but one of the things I try to look at is, what are the business benefits of short-term rental? Because if you read, you know, Airbnb's position papers, oh, we're bringing, you know, revenue to the town, all right, we're having people come in, the tourists, et cetera. But when you look through all the literature, the studies are inconclusive, because a lot of them, when they've done research, if they personally didn't do an STR, they went to a hotel instead. If somebody wanted to go to that area, they're going anyway. Then you have, are you bringing more revenue in during that, those period of two months they're there, but then the houses are dark the rest of the year? The plus and minus is of the benefit to the towns, but, you know, like Groton, I would say is unknown yet, and that's something that we really need to look at and get some experience from other towns and cities. But it really gets down to balancing the rights of the property owners to do what they want with the property, versus the rights of the rest of the town, let's say, the other 90%, to retain that sense of community that we moved here to achieve. I think the real effort here is that, do we or don't we address a regulation for short-term rentals? I'm going to mix in a little bit of the history from NOANC, is John Casey, the NOANC zoning attorney, took the position that the NOANC zoning laws do not allow short-term rentals, and therefore, everyone that has a current rental is actually illegal. And therefore, it's, we would serve the community if we would create a zoning regulations to control, manage, et cetera, short-term rentals. I won't get into, I mean, we went through that whole process, a year and a half, a lot of background and material. The first zoning reg was defeated, you know, voted down, and it's in the process of kind of saying, well, what should it be? Back to the origins of, what are the objectives, right? We're really trying to, really trying to do. I think the point is that it does need to be addressed, and I think the, you know, the decision today from the town council is, yeah, it does need study, we need some more input, and, you know, have the staff, and I think, got a whole bunch of folks that are willing to support and help that. But the bottom line is that we do need to have some form of regulation. Is it zoning? Is it ordinance? I mean, even that's a different discussion about what it should be. So, I'm not here to recommend anything specifically, other than we should have a thoughtful analysis and a position so that we can provide direction for people coming in and buying homes, or even the homeowners that are here. So, I think that's kind of my quick net.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Could you pass the microphone to Mr. Bradham, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tom Bradham, I live on Gravel Street in downtown Mystic, and I second and third everything everyone has said about the external qualities, if you will, of short-term rentals and their impact on our neighborhoods in Groton. I'd also bring up, and I had emailed to each counselor, and I think the town manager received a copy, of Economic Policy Institute study about the cost and benefits of Airbnbs, and it brings up quite, you know, well, I think eloquently. EPI is a nonprofit economic research consulting firm in Washington, DC, and they do a lot of issues related to social justice, social equality, and they bring up the fact that short-term rentals have a direct impact on the lack of affordable housing in communities. And I think that's a major concern we're experiencing in Mystic, because we have short-term investors coming into town, and John didn't remember the name, it's Great Gull Island, for one. They own nine properties that they market in Connecticut, and they essentially are running de facto hotels in the Mystic area, one on the Groton side, one on the Stonington side. I live next to one at nine Gravel Street. The property was purchased, and over 300 people have stayed there since Labor Day, because it's a two-night minimum. I did file, my condominium association, an official complaint with the town of Groton, a zoning complaint in fall of this year. So, the town of Groton has taken a position on short-term rentals, and the zoning code enforcement officer said it was okay to allow household lodging in a residential RS12 area, where the only permitted use in an RS12 area is residential living. So, consequently, the town has taken a position, and it says that short-term rentals are allowed, which I totally disagree with, and if you read the 400 pages of zoning regs, which the town spent a reasonable amount of time and effort, and I'm sure a lot of money, to develop, there's absolutely no permitted use of short-term rentals anywhere in those 400 pages. So, I don't see why we're allowing household lodging in residential zones, because you are allowing, through the zoning regs, hotels, motels, and lodging houses in neighborhoods. And our neighborhood has changed tremendously over the last two years, and I could bring 100 residents to the next town council, meaning if you would like, because we've noticed it, and property on Gravel Street and Pearl Street, which is some of the highest taxed property in the town of Groton, has been noticeably affected by out-of-town investors coming in and turning these properties into short-term hotels. And it's affecting the neighborhoods, the quality of life in the neighborhood, and that extends throughout town. So, whether you adopt an ordinance or direct the city and town to basically enforce the zoning regulations as written, because we can bring in different attorneys and argue the effectiveness of the regulations, but the regulations are in place, short-term rentals are not a permitted use. That's all I have to say.
Okay. So, one of the things that I wanted to raise at this point was, one of the reasons why I wanted people from all over town is because when we were working on the Plastics Ordinance, one of the things that we got to at the very end of the process was that the town can write an ordinance that impacts the whole town, so it would include a subdivisions. And we said that, you know, we were a little leery with pushing the Plastics Ordinance because the people hadn't been involved from the beginning. We have people from the city, we're reaching out to Mayor Hedrick, we have people from Groton-Lung Point. So, I would really, if we're going to do anything, I would like everybody to be in on this, that way, if it was the ordinance path we chose to take, we could start it right from the very beginning, and we'd get feedback from everybody. And Mr. Reiner mentioned why, in the material that we had, you don't want to go one particular way, because people will be grandfathered in, so you want to go another way. So, there's a lot of expertise that we need to sit and, you know, we need to listen to and work through, but did you want to just address that briefly?
Just one of the concerns with regulating short-term rentals with zoning is if it's not regulated now, or if it's in allowed use, then if you create a new regulation through zoning, everything that predated that is grandfathered. So, one, those grandfathered uses have an unfair economic advantage over those that are not grandfathered and now regulated, whereas an ordinance could just apply across the board to everyone. So, a couple of different things we want to think about also, a zoning ordinance is typically enforced by a zoning enforcement officer whose hours are nine to five, whereas an ordinance can also be enforced through our police department, which is a 24-hour operation. So, there's a number of different mechanisms that we want to think about in how we move this forward.
So, then, what I would ask the council at this point is, do you desire to move forward with some sort of working group, where we can incorporate the people that have come here with their concerns? Is it, so let's go this way, is there any objection to creating a small working group where we could process this forward a little bit? And it's going to take lots of meetings, and we're going to have to eventually bring in some of the owners. I know we have people here that do short-term rentals, we'll have to bring them in and hear from their side as well, but is there any objection to moving forward with this? Okay, that's great. So, then, the next thing I would ask, two things, are all of you gentlemen interested in participating and being invited to the working group meetings? Yes? Okay. And then, after the meeting, whichever counselors are interested in participating, and I've already heard from at least one counselor who is interested, I know I'm interested in this, so just speak to me after the meeting, and we can start working on something, and we could start working out a schedule which works best for everybody. I think we have everybody's email? I think, I know I have yours, I think we received email from you, Mr. Dunn, and I think Mr. Bradham. So, we should be able to reach everybody when it's time to schedule something? So, oh, great, okay, so we, okay, so we have Counselor Zepari and Counselor Borlon.
I'm wondering, we have zoning regulations in place that address this issue, but the zoning inspector is not enforcing them. Can we address that to him and say we would like to see these regulations enforced?
There isn't really regulations, there is a difference of opinion on interpretation, but I'll let John answer that, since it says a blank.
Yes. I don't have the enforcement action in front of me, so I don't want to get too much into the detail. I remember this coming up back in the fall, if memory serves correct, both the zoning official and the zoning enforcement officer discussed this issue, I believe they even spoke to the town attorney, and that opinion was based upon that. I'd rather not start arguing that point tonight, but I think
Thank you.
we need to address, if the council wants to address short-term rentals, we need to move forward and address short-term rentals.
Right. And I think those are the things that we can, and your legal expertise might be beneficial to have in the working group, if you have the time for it, Counselors of Perry. We have Counselor Borlon, Bumgarde, and then Counselor Hede.
I just wanted to thank you guys all for coming out. I think it is definitely a concern and an issue that is on the rise everywhere. After receiving, you know, this packet last week, I, you know, was talking to some friends in some different states, and they were talking about some of the problems they're having. A lot of these buildings aren't well-marked, therefore, if you're living on Gravel Street, they've had people searching for keys under mats, walking around their house, like, you know, late at night, coming in from out of town with flashlights, you know, you're alarmed. It's, it can cause an unsettled feeling, because a lot of these places don't have a marking saying, like, a certain getaway place, so people are searching, and it can raise a lot of concern, and from a market standpoint, she was addressing the concern that you had brought up regarding houses that are going on the market, and people, the average person doesn't even have a time to contact a realtor to say, I'd like to see that, and they say, oh, well, I'm not able to show you until Thursday, and then that property's been bought up, because this person's coming in with a lot of money, and just flipping these places and taking them, you know, like, so it's taking away that natural environment of a neighborhood. So, I hear a lot of your concerns, and I've been doing a little bit of my own research on the side, and I definitely think there's a lot of safety concerns. But she did bring up that they were starting to look at enforcing something out west, and they were looking at if the renter, if the owner was occupying the residence, then they have the control, like, it was different than, like you said, these whole buildings being rented out with big parties and stuff. So, I think there's, I'm interested to see what more can come out of this, I think, I think this is a great starting point. I do agree that we want to move and have enough information, but we also do want to move swiftly, because as we speak, the properties are being, it's growing, and is there a possibility from a zoning aspect, can something be put in a zoning, in the right of the zoning, as well as an ordinance? I mean, or how would those mimic, like, that was one of my Or how would those mimic, like, that was one of my questions, is a dual right where there's, because someone could come in and like take down an ordinance, right? You can enact an ordinance and then you could have a different group of people say, "We don't think we need this ordinance anymore." But could we protect it fully in between a zoning and an ordinance, possible? I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah, I would discourage having the same thing regulated in two different places. An ordinance, not a zoning ordinance, but an ordinance is adopted by the town council. You set the policy for the town. So I think that might be more the direction that we lean, but that's something we can lay out the options with the town attorney, and you will make the ultimate decision on that. And if it's not going to be an ordinance, then if it was a zoning regulation, that would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for them to decide if that's the right place and if that's something that they want to regulate.
Thank you.
Councillor Baumgartner, and then Heed.
Well, it seems like as the world becomes more technologically advanced, you're seeing more disruptive technologies that will continue to deal with, you know, these issues. And so, you know, first and foremost, thank you for coming out and staying this late. One thing I think was important to have as part of the discussion is kind of distinguishing the differences between the various different entities that do, you know, rent out these properties. Because there are also folks who say, who call their homes, say Mystic, their homestead, but may rent out a few times a week, or not a few times a week, a few times a month during the summer months when they go away, that may supplement their large tax bill, and they may very well be your neighbors as well. And so I think those individuals are very, very much different than, you know, out-of-town or in some cases out-of-state company that is, you know, functioning like a mini hotel. So, you know, thank you for lending your experiences and your expertise on this, and I look forward to, you know, seeing this working group in action.
Councillor Heed.
So I'm very interested in this issue, and for a couple of reasons. One of them being it's important to make sure that we have a good community for all of us living, but there's another issue that I work for a hotel, so I need to disclose that. I actually work for four hotels. So I may have to recuse myself from the vote, I'm not certain, but there could be an ethical issue.
No, you just have to put it on the record.
Okay.
So it's on the record?
It's on the record.
All right. So we have no objection to doing this. Like I said, we will, we will be in touch when councillors decide if they're interested in participating. We'll get together and find some time to meet. Again, thank you all for coming out, and we appreciate your being here and sharing with us, and we appreciate your willingness to work with us to try to work through this problem. So thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a good night. All right. So we are on to 5F, and this is on page 187. Can you believe we have 187 pages in a non-budget night?
Well, 104 of them are short-term rentals.
2020, this is 187, the last page. 2020-40 endorsement of the CCOG Regional Performance Incentive Program application. Councillor Melendez, I believe?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, just fly.
We'll take a minute until the room clears before we move. All right, Councillor Melendez.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the Southeastern Committee Council of Governments Executive Director James S. Butler to submit applications for regional performance incentive program grants and to do all things necessary and appropriate to carry out the terms of the agreement, I assume.
Second. Moved by Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner. Mr. Burke, did you want to address anything on this?
Sure, sure. I mean, it's pretty well laid out there, but the council of governments that we're one of the members of, they have 22 member municipalities. They put, excuse me, they put into the Office of Policy and Management three grants through the Regional Performance Incentive Program to, basically an attempt towards, step towards regionalization. One is for a code enforcement official, $100,000 in funds requested, $20,000 COG match, regional grant writer, $80,000 in funds requested, $8,000 COG match, and human resources staff, $80,000 funds requested and $8,000 COG match. Part of this, there was that regional, that regionalization study that took place by COG not that long ago. Their intent is, yeah, we're one of the larger municipalities, but there's many very small municipalities that don't have some of this staff, even the human resources aspect. The intent is, for those that really need these services, let's get this grant, get them using this, see if they want to pay for it after the grant ends, and then could it be grown from there to more municipalities? So it's a first step towards trying regionalization.
Very good.
No, outside of our dues that go into COG, there's no, no funds particularly associated with this grant.
Councillor Parker.
Just, okay, clarification. You said there's other groups who are smaller, we get the grant, and they possibly may have to pay into it, but if
No, they'll get it as part of their, I don't, I don't want to speak for, I can't say for sure they weren't asked for the service. I didn't think so, but I can't say for sure.
Okay.
I do know that we're one of the last ones to take this up. Just a little time in work, so most every other municipality has approved this at this point. We all have to approve it for them to move forward. I believe this city took it up, too. Is that
Yeah, I believe they did, but like, I'm slightly confused on how that would work with a regional human resources staff person, or a grant writer, or a code enforcement official, as they would have to know each of the municipalities zoning regulations or whatever regulations they have. So we have to have one person that knows
Well, they're not, we wouldn't be using them on those two, code enforcement and human resources. Like I said, some of the smaller ones don't even have a person, really. They're kind of doing it in-house with whoever, you know, trying to muddle it through, so some of this will be helpful there. I don't know if they're going to get charged extra, though, if the grant pays for it all, I can't answer that.
Okay.
The one thing I do see is, you know, I suppose there's a potential of using the grant writer, and we have just had to see what they come up with for that.
Okay.
Though, one grant writer for 22 municipalities is
That's what
So I'm never counting on it, but it's possible.
My concern, but okay, thank you.
But the idea is maybe if people like that service, they start permanently paying in, and maybe others start joining, and, you know, at least
You still have one person doing everything.
Well, no, they could, I'm saying if more people started buying in, you'd have more staff. It could grow.
This is the first step for the regionalization incentive.
I'll do it online.
Okay. Any other discussion? I don't see any other hands? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of 2020-40 endorsement of the CCOG Regional Performance Incentive Program applications, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. All right. We don't have any review agenda items. We do have other business, I believe. Councillor Franco?
Thank you. I would like to request that the Economic Development Committee could gather some emails from as many Groton businesses as possible, from whatever sources they can get them, and create like a database of emails for all businesses in Groton. And this way, if the town council, or there's issues that come before the town council that pertain to Groton businesses, the EDC can reach out to these businesses by email and let them be aware of it, and possibly have some of those open forums that they were discussing about having in the future, and invite all businesses in Groton to inform them and let them know what's coming up. Because I have heard people saying they would, they would like more business outreach when it comes to what's happening in the town. So I think this is one way of helping to solve that issue. And I think the EDC is possibly capable of doing that, but they serve the town manager, so it's your discretion.
And I will say, I appoint them, but they don't serve, serve me, you know, I can request it. And it would be nice to know if you're all in agreement with that, because it lends weight to it to say the council asked.
Is there any objection to Councillor Franco's request? Councillor Bordelain.
I just want to second what Councillor Franco stated, because we, one of the discussions that had come out at one of our meetings was like, how are we gathering information? And I, me coming new to the Plastics Ordinance, asking like, we should have a system where we can, quickly, if there was an emergency in the town, right, be able to put information out to them. So I think this would be a great tool.
I am in 100% agreement.
I think it's great.
Councillor Obray.
I just wanted to say that the EDC committee has been trying to do this for several years, and they have not been very successful. And there was quite a bit of conversation at the last EDC meeting about it. And personally, I think that the first thing that might be suggested is that I think we have this information in the fact that when you open a business, you have to register with the town. So I'm pretty sure that the assessor would have the information that we're looking for. I don't know exactly who you register your DBA with.
The clerk's office.
All right, then the clerk's office should have the information. And it's actually a good way to find out if all the businesses are being taxed. So that would be
You just guarantee no one's going to know.
Right. No one's turned over anything.
It would be, I think that it would be prudent to try that first.
I think also we could put something on our economic development website, you know, saying, "Hey, please, you know, register your email so you can get pertinent information."
I believe, I was told that the assessor's office, this is something new that was requested to be put on forums, so this is a newer thing. So businesses that have been in play for a long time, they didn't have to put their email on there before.
We would go to multiple sources and gather
That's right, there are multiple sources that can be mined.
But they want to have enough of their information, maybe we then send a card to them to fill out. But, you know, what the EDC is trying to do is to talk to businesses, and as I said, it's not gone well, as you know. And I don't think that's going to change too much. I bet they've been five years working on it, easily. So I think that we might try another avenue first, and we might find that we can get the information we need if we push it a little bit. It's there.
Right. And the EDC plans, well, what they've been discussing is having quarterly meetings and inviting businesses in.
Right.
So I would like them to have a list, a data list of all businesses, so they can invite all businesses and not just the ones that they've had communications with.
Okay, so the underlying, the underlying motive here is to have greater communication with the business community.
Yes, it's business outreach.
Right. Whether it be Councillor Franco or relying on something that's pre-existent, but that's, I don't think anyone's disagreeing that that's what we would like, correct?
Yeah, I have enough direction, yeah.
What?
I'm good.
You're good, you have enough direction? Okay. All right. Is there any other, other business? Councillor Bordelain.
Um, yes, I attended the Board of Ed budget hearing, and a lot of people are talking about our school fields being out of date. I'm not sure how I properly do this, or how we can get it on a discussion, or at least on the agenda, and have some maybe a communication with the Board of Ed or, you know, town to start talking about ways that maybe we can work with our legislators to look at the infrastructure of our fields and in our town, especially starting at the schools. It's a, it's a, it's a big concern.
Councillor Obray.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When you go to these meetings, are there other people coming in and saying, you know, we're concerned about the fields? Is this a
The meeting that I attended, there was probably, at least that I can remember, two to three other people, I think a PAC might be even forming, to talk about school fields. I've been bringing up school fields, I had brought it up when, you know, we had discussed what things to move towards to the legislator. One of my things, I know Ledger had recently got help with some funding for their sports field. So that was one of the things I was interested in, it didn't make it to the letter, but it's been something I've been speaking about for a couple of years now. As we grow as a community, we're building new schools, but we're not updating our fields, and we're not updating, when you go to other towns, not only in Southeastern Connecticut, but where the children compete, our fields are like almost the most outdated fields in the area. We, it's not just a turf issue, it's a usability issue. We have field hockey playing on our baseball field, digging it up. There's nowhere else for them to play. Our, our field is not handicap accessible, our bathrooms are old, our field house is outdated, family members can't access the bleachers. It's a concern that I feel needs to be looked at. It's not something that's going to happen overnight, just like the building of the schools was something that we kind of fell into at the end here. But it's something that definitely I think that the conversation should start. And how we get there, I'm not sure. Maybe collaboration with the Board of Ed, it's not going to be for this budget, obviously, it probably would take a couple of years to get this going, but starting to form up a plan to better our schools, not just academically, but just from a athletic standpoint in having the fields available. Because I feel there's things that we lose out on that we could have full access to if we had an updated field. I think one of the gentlemen spoke about the band competition, stating that they couldn't host it here because other schools had, you know, better facilities to do such, and we, you know, we lacked the handicap accessibility, so.
Okay.
That was a band competition, but there was a regional
All right, so the floor originally belonged to Councillor Obray?
Okay, thank you. I'm wondering if maybe we should begin with parks and rec, because I'm not sure who's responsible for what fields. And I think it might be good if we, we asked that question before we went further with it.
They are on our schedule for, is it the first Cal of February, I believe? It's either the first or second Cal, I believe it's the first. Parkshire Mike could come in and talk about sporting, sports fields, and what we're at on usage and needs and that type of thing.
Okay.
So we could hold off until that time, then? Councillor Heed was on the list next, Councillor Zepary.
I just want to underline that what Councillor Bordelain is saying is to get everybody together and then our state legislators, so we can ask for state assistance like they did in Ledger. I just want to underline that so that everybody heard it.
Councillor Zepary.
I would very much like to see a listing of all of the fields that we have in the town, and with that, a copy of the dates and times on which they've been reserved, and the dates and times which they are not reserved or not used.
So the listing of, there's an inventory online, but you can't get the dates and times, that would have to come from the department, but
See what I can do.
All right, thank you very much.
The study was sent out.
Councillor Franco.
I believe a study was sent out that I had requested that the previous study of all of our fields be sent out to all of us, so we can review that. This is something I've been championing for a while, and as I keep saying, our town does this differently. We have our parks and rec, in most towns, those are separate. And we have the school, and those are separate. And we have meshed them together, and the fields are being overused, and we don't have enough of them. So there is a study, it has been emailed, it was emailed out to the council, so we could all review that. And I think that's, where I put it, on Mark Berry's, that's why it's coming up on our agenda, these type of things, because I think it should be looked at. I don't have all the answers. I think funding and requesting it from the state is a good idea, but we also have to come up with what we need, because this study is already a couple of years old, and it's already outdated, and we need more than what they're even asking for in that study.
So that's a, when it comes before the Cal, then we have a chance to discuss what we want in addition to what we need, so. All right. Is there any other, other business? Councillor Zepary.
As long as we're at it, I think that we have to look at our infrastructure. And by infrastructure, I'm talking about water and sewage, which does not extend throughout the entire town. If we want the town to develop, we have to have municipal water and sewage to all of the areas of the town. And I think we should be developing a plan to extend municipal water supply and sewage to the entire town.
We don't have a water system ourselves, so we'd have to bring Aquarian and Groton Utilities in for discussions.
I mean, we're providing, I know we're providing water to the casino in Uncas, and we're providing water
Groton Utilities does, not the town, so.
No, but I'm saying Groton does. I think it, we really have to look to developing the town, we have to look to supporting those communities. And I think once there's water and sewage there, you'll be surprised at the growth of the town in those areas.
Hey, any
Motion to adjourn.
Councillor Heed has made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who seconded?
Nobody.
Councillor Zepary seconded. Okay.
I withdraw my second?
He seconded.
Oh.
Councillor Heed made the motion to adjourn, seconded by Zepary, non-debatable. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Bordelone? Obray? Abstentions? So seven in favor, two opposed, zero abstentions. We are adjourned at 10:10.